Welcome, everyone. I would like to call to order the Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting for October 19th. We are being recorded. Thank you very much. And I will begin tonight with any public participation. None? I'm very surprised because we have a very big group. Okay, moving on. Approval of the minutes, please.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of September 7th. I'll second your motion.
Okay. Any discussion on them? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The third item is the Juul litigation. If you folks recall, a few months ago, we discussed the Juul litigation. Michaela had provided some data for the class action and we signed an agreement to submit and participate. We got another document to sign and come to find out there were multiple defendants in the case. The one that we signed earlier this year, all but one defendant was part of that document, that settlement. Now we have one more defendant who agreed to settle. We're looking at getting, I think it's $3,484 in additional funds. So Russ Hales reviewed the agreement. He is fine with us signing. We just need a motion to do so and I can execute that document. If there's any questions on that. It's literally the same Juul discussion we had earlier this year.
So the motion would be to accept the settlement and allow you to sign?
To allow me to sign the document to participate in the class action, to receive the settlement.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the document entering into the litigation. I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Lucas. That was last minute. Okay. What was that?
You said it. You better vote for it.
Yeah. The next item is a grant opportunity. If you recall, on our virtual meeting on August 15th, I believe it was, at the end of the meeting, Kingston expressed some interest in applying for a grant to explore the idea of full regionalization. This grant would allow us to hire a consultant to evaluate the district and come forward with the pros and cons data for consideration in a full regionalization. Kingston Elementary School Committee and Halifax Elementary School Committee have already voted to not support full regionalization, but support the idea of applying for the grant and hiring a consultant to explore the idea. Kingston would like to see Silver Lake being the regional school district in the area, in the district, to also consider supporting the idea of them applying for the grant and exploring full regionalization. I think it is our duty to look at all possibilities. The last time I'm aware that we looked at full regionalization was an in-house group, meaning we didn't use an outside resource. It was school committee members, it was town officials, it was superintendent. It was back when Dana Parker was our superintendent. So it was a long time ago. Times have changed, financial situations have changed, education has changed, so many things have changed. I'm not saying whether we should fully regionalize or we shouldn't fully regionalize, but I think we have a duty to seek out data and evaluate it, especially if we can use an outside consultant at no expense to the district. So I throw it out there for the committee to consider. We do support Kingston's application for this grant. They would like us to follow up this evening's meeting with a letter just saying we support them moving forward with the grant. I open it up for comments, questions.
So this grant wouldn't cost Halifax or any of the other districts any money? The grant would fully, 100%?
Okay, correct. I might...
I would support it if we are not committing to the fact that we are encouraging it one way or the other with the regionalization. I'm doing this for investigative purposes exclusively. I would certainly support.
And that's where I would be coming from as well, Mark, to be honest with you.
Where does Plumton stand on all of this? They want us all in as a district?
I'm not going to speak for Plumton, Jason. I know, I think what you might express, but I...
I don't have the ability to speak for my entire town. If this motion is brought forth tonight, I would not stand in opposition, but I would most likely abstain from the vote.
Is this, so this is not something that requires all three towns approval? If Kingston and Halifax have already approved it, there is going to be a consultant? This is more just a proposition of supporting?
My understa-- that's a very good question. My understanding is, in applying for the grant, the more support, the more evidence of interest in using the grant for exploring the idea, the more likely it is that we would be, you know, successful in applying for it.
It's kind of a follow-up. If we take the vote, let's say the vote carries tonight and they apply, if it's rejected, if our application is rejected, that would be it. We would not be like committing to funding a consultant ourselves.
Absolutely not in any way.
What would be the timeline if we do take a vote and accept this? What would be the timeline of their little, you know, looking into all the towns and getting back to what the numbers are? What's the timeline?
I would have to come back to you on that. You mean the consultant?
Yeah, for them to do their work and come back and give us...
Yeah. I don't know if they would have a feel for that yet. When they get the grant and they hire the consultant, I think they would come in and take a look at the size of the region and the information they'd have to gather. I would expect that if we did vote this evening in support of this concept, if we are awarded the grant money, then I would expect that Kingston would come back and perhaps introduce the consultant to us and give us a feel for what the process would look like. Mark?
You had mentioned that they would study our region as a whole, as it exists today, and give us feedback as to some of the things that would be better if we were fully regionalized. But I'm looking at this maybe an opportunity for even if we get all the way down, get all the information, we may find other ways that we as a region can be more efficient without full regionalization.
I don't disagree.
And I think that is a good reason to support this going forward because information, you know, can be viewed in different ways. I'm not saying we're in favor of full regionalization, but at this point, I think that would be good information.
I agree. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion from someone for it.
I'll make the motion to support Kingston's initiative to grant application to study the Silver Lake region as a whole, for the possible choices of, for the regionalization.
I'll second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Any abstained? Any opposed? Abstained?
Not opposed, abstained.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, boys volleyball program discussion.
So before I introduce our student presenters tonight, I wanted to provide a little bit of historical background for the school committee. As you can see in attendance tonight, we have our girls volleyball team, which has grown exponentially over the last few years. The program has been quite successful this year. Now with that growth comes a lot of great perks and opportunities for our students, but unfortunately for our male students who have previously had the opportunity to try out and play on the girls' team in order to avoid a Title IX violation, in order to remain in compliance, we were not able to allow our boys to try out for the team this year because they would have displaced girls on the team. So we consulted with our school attorneys, we tried to explore different options, and at the end of the day, we referred to our district policy, JJIV, which is only a shared drive and is also being passed out to you right now, which outlines the steps that proponents would need to follow in order to add a program to our athletics. So tonight, I'm really excited, so proud of our young men here. Brady Flommer, Zach Khor, and Joey Shepherd are going to share with you the steps that they have taken thus far and then give their ultimate hope of being able to add a boys' volleyball team. We can hopefully be able to add it this spring. Turn the noise to these guys.
My name is Brady Flommer.
I'm Zach Khor.
And I'm Joey Shepherd.
And we are the boys that Mrs. Gill previously mentioned played for the girls volleyball team back in our freshman year of high school. Due to Title IX, we weren't allowed to try out this year and we have been working towards trying to get a boys volleyball team started for the high school for a long time since October of last year.
You already know who we are.
Yeah, you already know our names. Me, I want to play boys volleyball because me personally, I love playing this sport. It's something I do all the time. I practice on my own, I do drills in my backyard to keep my skills up, and as I get older, I really want to play for a college team. And to be able to do that, I would need to have gameplay, play on a team, play on an official league, and everything like that.
For similar reasons, I love the sport. I want to open up the opportunity for others like me who want to make progress in the sport and go to college for it to have the opportunity, whether it's this year or the next. Plan on going as far as I possibly can and making as many opportunities for others to follow in my footsteps.
I want to win a banner for the school and obviously with this boys team, we could probably do it. And we have a more likely chance since there's going to be another team. And I would also like to go to a college, Long Beach. It's a Division I college in California. And I hope to win the NCAA championship with them, probably more than one, hopefully. And then after that, I would like to go on the US Athletic Team for it and then hopefully bring home a gold medal for the US.
As Zach mentioned before in the previous slide, we created the team not only for us to be able to play the sport that we love, but also to give other people the opportunity to explore this sport and maybe find the same joy that we have with it. And this would give people more athletic options, like to play boys volleyball and they could try it out, just give it a shot, and if they love it, then they love it. For months since October of last year, we worked with our athletic director, Ms. Jamison, and our principal, Mrs. Gill, to work on getting a boys volleyball team started. We've been in meetings with them. One of the girls' members, Reese Helisek, has helped us through that process and it's been a long time coming, so, and now we're standing here in front of all you guys, so, yeah, that's about it.
In order to run this program, there'd obviously need to be some source of income so that we can sustain it for as long as humanly possible. If you look behind you, the total amount for the JV volleyball team is listed above. There is a bank statement that could be handed out to you, I'm not sure if it's already been done, that does show how much we already have access to.
It's also posted on the...
It's also posted up there that will go towards, as said, the boys volleyball team. We're also selling these bracelets, we're passing those out, that we're using as a general fundraising technique at all the Silver Lake girls volleyball team games. It'll go to us boosters and will primarily be helping both teams, but will be helping this as well. The Silver Lake boys and girls teams combined will be working with the boosters as a whole. And together, we've come up with some future fundraising and game events that if you look behind you, you'll see that we plan on using and adapting as they've worked well for other schools, and we hope to have the same here. Give you a few seconds to look that over.
This sheet right here, presented in this slide, is the total cost analysis that we would need for a JV boys volleyball team for year one of Silver Lake. Coaches, transportation, officials, uniforms, game help, all of it is included, and we also have a list of every team that we could potentially play around the area.
Please keep in mind that Bay State League is a league consisting of 12, I believe, 12 separate schools that all have their own separate opportunities, but would open up a new avenue of play.
This is the, if we were to get a varsity team in second year, this is the cost analysis for everything that we would need to be able to run that team and pay coaches and all that. And there's notes listed between, on North Quincy and Quincy, if you want a second to read that over.
This would be an additional team to the JV? This would be adding a second team?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And this is the total cost analysis for either two or three that we would need in total to run both teams at the same time. Thank you.
Once you look that over, see, you'll see that we have everything included. We did not miss a step. It is all there and planned, and it will likely become less as we go further on in the program, as we'll have pre-existing material. With this team, we look forward to spark interest in the middle schools with our games, with posters, and with our general fundraising. It's not as aware as the high school, but we have been shown interest from our fellow high schoolers everywhere, from freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and primarily seniors this year, who'd want to play this upcoming season. We're looking forward to potentially sending out school emails. We had a run in the morning announcements for, I believe, a week that brought in many new applicants for the games. And we plan to have donation boxes alongside all the booster games and their own separate staffs.
Wait a sec. If you look over there, Dano Tucker and Owen McKinnon, who are two of the seniors that are interested in playing boys volleyball this year, are standing in the crowd.
Here's a pie graph of what grades and wants to play. You can see that it's, the main group is seniors, but there's also, as in the purple, some eighth graders. There's also a lot of 10th graders, too. And combined, we still have more than the seniors, so that means we would be able to run it for years.
We do additionally have nine other applicants who wrote it on paper, who are not considering that. Primarily, they are 10th through 12th grade.
We have already the access to pre-existing gym equipment, the nets we have, although they are used for the girls' nets, they are easily adjustable. We just need to push them up a little bit. And then the, we have the gym space. And the athletic director, Ms. Jamison, is, sorry, believes that this condition is going to be met with some shuffling in early March because snow will be on the ground, there's going to be rain. So the softball team, the boys, the cross team, and the baseball team will most likely need to use some of the gym space.
If, even though there are specific volleyballs meant for boys volleyball playing due to the fact that, like, genetic differences and all that, so we would need to invest in some volleyballs purposefully designed to be played with by men, officials, jerseys, transportation, just what we would need to get to other schools and be officially stated as Silver Lake team.
When it comes to team scheduling and games, we do have 12 potential teams, not including the league I mentioned to you earlier, including North Quincy, Quincy, all the way down to Barnstable, as listed behind you. There are pre-existing leagues among those members, however, mentioned beneath them, that would have access to other opportunities of play between other school leagues, which would get us much more ease of competition, if it could be said. Our athletic director is in charge of most scheduling and what teams we play, so we can't obviously give all the information now as it's yet to be scheduled. She'll also be working on practice schedules once a coach is hired. Many students have showed interest this year in supporting boys volleyball as a whole, individual members, as in family, friends. We also have, as you can see, much of the girls volleyball team and the booster committee, along with many faculty members who are willing to watch the program grow, such as Mr. Gregory in the back. All support it and are looking forward to its growth throughout the years.
These are some of the advertisements that we have had. The two posters, one on the left and one on the right, have been posted around the school on the bulletin boards. And the QR code that you see in the posters has been posted on the Friday Focus and also has been shown in the morning announcements, as Priti used to say, "For a week." And there's a Google form about boys volleyball, which if you go onto it, you can register, not register, but show that you have interest in it by putting down your email, putting down like what grade you're in, what your name is, and all that. Another thing is that volleyball form is not only for the people who want to play, it's also for the adults and parents and people who would just like to support boys volleyball in any way, shape, or form that they can. That's it.
That concludes our presentation. Any additional questions, concerns?
This isn't a concern, just a question. How big is a team normally? Like, if you tried out, how many people would make the team?
Normally, on a registered volleyball team, normally only 12 to 13 players would make the team.
But we do have an exception, like, of last year on the girls volleyball team. I believe there were 16 players?
Can be upwards of at least 17 before it becomes a major issue. We also have to double-check on the same front, whether we get it up this season, if seniors will be able to participate, so that may heavily affect numbers.
Oh, yeah, because of the JV?
Yeah.
Kind of a second question. You three might not know this, but Martha, you might know this.
Over there, yeah.
I know some, like, I've got friends who've got kids in private schools, like NDA, I'm thinking, where middle schoolers are allowed to play on high school teams. Is that allowed in a public school district?
Ms. Jamison?
So I would think that it could be, but only if you really need to do that. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion recently about the use of state graders. They're trying to start minimizing that back a little bit at the state level. But it's certainly an option, but, you know, I think we'd rather try to sustain and start the team with 9 through 12, if good and all possible.
Thank you. And actually, you're going to try and start with 9 through 12, but it would be a JV team?
Yeah, so the thought behind starting with a JV, situate just went through the same exercise, so to speak. They decided to start at a JV, or sometimes athletics might call it club level. There's a couple benefits to that. Developmentally, it would be better, I think, for us to start at the JV level. We'll play more games. If we get right into the varsity level, I think it could be not good parity right away. So JV level also, I think, if we were really shooting to try to have a JV team this spring, you can commit to games more readily with schools than to get them to make a commitment for a varsity game. Because schools are really thinking about scheduling now for the power rankings, so they may not want to play us right out of the gates. So I think it would be better, a good progression this way.
Thank you. What is the next step? What is needed now? First of all, you young men did a wonderful job. Very articulate. You'll all do well in college. I can tell you that right now, just from the couple of minutes I've spent with you. What can the committee do? What are the next steps? What are you looking for from us?
So following our district policy, right? The young men have done their job as the proponents of this team, presenting everything to the principal and substantiating that they've done their research. They have enough people committed to be on the team. They have been fundraising to finance the team. So they have officially presented it to myself and Ms. Jamison. We have officially presented it to Dr. Cruz. So this is now officially presenting it to the school committee, asking you to support us for a spring boys volleyball season. And then, oh, I'm catching bugs over here. Thank you, Mrs. Gill. And then, you know, for the policy, after two successful years, the revenue of the school committee can then vote to take it all fully into our budget. We could certainly do it sooner. It's a great way, but that would be a vote for another day. So initially, say, what we're looking for is your approval to be able to run this spring towards independently finance.
I would like to know if anybody from the committee would like the honor of making that motion.
I'll make the motion gladly. Make a motion to support the approval, support whatever I need to do to allow the boys volleyball team to run this spring. Yeah?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none?
It's a JV team.
JV, yeah. All those in favor? Excellent.
Awesome job, John.
Yeah. Thank you for spending time with us tonight.
Well done, guys.
It was really well done.
Must have something else exciting for you, you know?
It was so nice having an audience.
They really do.
I felt so much.
I am so sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. I won't hold you back. You can still play. We won't be banned. No, here, come on. Honestly, don't have no problem. But thank you.
Good job.
Have a good night.
Bye, Joey.
Yeah, very much so.
Yes. Now, I think Debbie's got to ready for speech. Oh, yeah. She went to the Lisa. Of course. I'm going to come out of my mind. I'm with you. Principal Gill, um, do you want to go first?
We actually, um, share presentation.
Okay, and that's what you're going to start with as well?
Not as exciting as golf. You want to get that?
Yeah.
Gill, have you set the clicker?
I do.
Paula, do you want to take anything out of order this term in it to what we set up?
Um, I would be open to suggestions.
I mean, I can do my other bits.
Do you want to?
That's what I.
Sure, sure.
That would be great.
Little punches. Um, so staff and school updates, the high school, I have some exciting news from our AP program to share. Caroline McKenna, who graduated this past June, she was recognized here last fall. She received one of the superintendent's award. Um, she received a perfect score on her AP US Government and Politics exam. Um, she was one of only 48 students from around the entire world, 0.1% to earn every point possible on this challenging college level exam. And I know that scores will always drive everything we do, but it's a pretty cool accomplishment. Um, so congratulations to her and kudos to her teacher, Mr. Anthony Weber. We're pretty excited to get that, that news. Um, and then I have a donation request. In the shared drive should be a list of titles of books that the Kingston Public Library would like to donate. Our school librarian, um, would vet them through our collection development process. There are about 50 books listed, 11 of them right off the bat she knows are catered more towards a younger, um, audience, so those would be passed on to the middle school librarian. Uh, and then any that don't meet the requirements as part of the, um, CDP would be either recycled or returned to Kingston Public Library to be donated to somebody else.
Motion to accept the donation from the Kingston Public Library. Second.
Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I didn't hear Becky then.
We do. I don't know. I can go look for her while you're stuck.
I think she'll just give that right time.
There she is.
Student, uh, was taken, so I just brought student to the nurse. Is the nurse in there?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry for the delay.
By all means. I was also being polite. She's saving me, she's saving students.
Do you guys want to stand over here? It's one of those case that. So for our MCAS presentation this evening, we've combined the middle school, um, and high school results, and this has been a collaborative effort. Uh, me and Principal Chouette, Principal Gill, myself, um, Nicole Fanishev, the ELA coordinator, and Scott Farrell, our science coordinator, also Dan Correa, uh, the high school math teacher, participated, um, and helped us with the math data as well, and he's filling in for Kevin Swear, who's, um, out on leave for, uh, a little bit. You have these slides, uh, in your, the shared drive, and it's easier to see because some of the data, uh, may be hard to see from far away. So if you'd like to follow along that way, you can as well. The first couple of slides, we just wanted to share with the committee, uh, were, were put together at the state level, and I think it's just worth seeing, uh, sort of the state takeaway that was shared in early September. All students in the Commonwealth in these particular grade levels, uh, per federal law have to take these assessments in grades three through eight. So obviously DESI tracks the data. You can see one of the big frames that the state uses is to try to make up the ground that was lost since 2019. So you'll see lots of comparisons to how students, uh, did prior to the pandemic. Essentially, uh, bullet number four on this slide captures most of it. There still remains significant ground to be made up to reach pre-pandemic achievement levels. So you see that in the following, uh, three slides. Our slides don't necessarily go along with the state, obviously. Uh, we have, uh, you know, we're a much smaller subset, but when you look at statewide ELA MCAS results, you'll see that there's been some slow progress with the two grade levels, fourth and fifth, across the state, uh, showing the highest gains in English language arts. For math, actually very similar, grades four and five had, um, the most progress. A little bit smaller progress, um, at the other grade levels. And then the far right column just shows the difference between, um, 2023 and where students were in, in 2019. So you still see some sizable negative numbers, but there's slow progress, and that's what the green numbers represent. Finally, uh, in science, across the state, there was a slight, uh, retreat in all of the grade levels that science is offered in, and that's grades five, eight, and 10. So at this point, I'm going to, uh, hand it over to, uh, Napoleon Fanishev, who's going to talk a little bit about the ELA results.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Uh, I'm grateful to be here again to talk a little bit about, um, how our students in seventh, eighth, and 10th grade fared on the 2023 spring MCAS. Um, so again, I, as, as Assistant Superintendent Lynch pointed out, I know the, the font is a little hard to see on the screen. Uh, however, I will state that, um, at the, at the middle school, our students in seventh and eighth grade are performing, uh, slightly above the, the state average, with 46% of Silver Lake students in grade seven and eight, um, achieving at the meeting or exceeding expectations performance levels. As mentioned before, there have been some changes in, um, in, in the test, uh, sent from the post-pandemic. 2021 was a shorter test for students. Uh, so I am interested in those scores, but more interested in, um, looking at our slow and steady progress. In the 2022 spring test, we were scoring at 43% of students meeting or exceeding expectations, and I'm happy to see that we are, we're trending in, in the right direction there. Our district goal still remains, um, high, and we are hoping to, to keep moving in the direction of having 70% of our students in the exceeding or meeting expectations for our results.
What do the elementary numbers look like? Cause I'm kind of interested in how we're doing at elementary, how it's translated to the middle school. We obviously have the data next on what it looks like at high school. Just, just ballpark.
I'm sorry, can you clarify ballpark? Do they look similar to?
So like, what are, historically, what are our ELA scores look like in, at the elementary schools?
The percentages would be in the, uh, 40s and 50s as well. Do you have any?
All right, I'll, I'll hold my next question to the next slide.
The next slide brings us to the high school results, um, where we are ever closer to our 70% meeting or exceeding expectations district goal. Um, on the 2023 spring test, our 10th graders, um, we were performing considerably above the state average at 67% of our students in grades 10, performing at the meeting or exceeding expectations performance level. Uh, and again, you can see over time, um, that we are continuing to make, make some slight progress, um, ever moving toward that, that goal of the 70%.
So in two to three years, we're making a 20-plus percentage jump. Is that? I mean, what's behind that? Do we know?
You mean moving why the 70%?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, if you go back to the previous slide. Okay, so in 2021, um, you know, we were.
Do you want the middle school side?
Yeah, the middle school, yep. In 2021, we had 44% of our, you know, call it seventh and eighth graders, or eighth graders. Two years later, in 2023, 44% of those same students are now at 67%. So what's happening between eighth grade and 10th grade, or between elementary and eighth grade and 10th grade, that is moving us from the 40s to close to 70?
I do see a very excited middle school teacher.
Yeah, and also a professor of curriculum and instruction at U S Boston. There has been no correlation between the middle school results and high school results. It's been widely known throughout the state of Massachusetts for years, the middle school results are always below the high school results, and there is a wide variety of theories as to why that may be contingent graduation requirements.
So the fact that it is a graduation requirement, we think has something to do with the motivation of our. So just to be clear, the reason that's important is right now MTA is asking to remove it as a graduation.
Uh, there's several organizations who are asking for it to be removed as graduation requirement. It was never intended to be used for graduation requirement. That was something that was put onto the plate much, much later on after the advent of the MCAS. It was supposed to let us know trends in the education of our students and where we needed to course correct with our curriculum at a local level. Not saying that there is not need for data, it's just, the MCAS has never been more referenced or validated as an effective tool for assessing how our students are doing. And again, the correlation between the middle school and the high school, if you go back and look at historic DART data from any district in the state, you'll notice a similar, I'm not saying identical, but a similar discrepancy between the middle school scores and the high school scores.
How's the relationship between third grade and high school scores?
Even the relationship between third, fourth, and fifth grade math, if you look at those scores, it, it's balanced slightly depending on.
Interesting.
One MTA, you can do your own research if this data is available, and it does use DART data, which is for every district in the state.
Just, I'm not going to be as articulate as Jason, um, because I'm not a professor of curriculum instruction, not just math. Um, but we see similar trends in math as well, the eighth grade to 10th grade scores, not just at Silver Lake, but again, across the state. But also, I think it's really important to note, the state is the one who sets the cut scores. It's not an absolute, we're not looking at a percentage of problems correct. It's, the kids take the test, and then months later, we find out how do their results fit into the state's scale, and the state can change it year to year for whatever reason they want to. That complicates things, Mike.
Yeah, for the record, I'm agile.
So actually, I'm thrilled that Mr. Fisher mentioned the, the whole point about, um, setting trends, right? And thinking about course correcting and thinking about, you know, how we can ever, um, serve our students to, to, to our very best. And so, um, I'm happy to, to share with you some of our trends and some of our next steps. Uh, we always continue to focus on and recognize MCAS growth, um, at, you know, the, the classroom level, at the individual teacher level, in meetings that I have, um, at the district level, and one-on-one with teachers, as well as students. Um, we do always identify and take a, take a close look at our lower scoring areas. Uh, they can be noticed into, to trends through the years. Uh, we also make sure that we determine our current cohort strengths and weaknesses, and again, communicate all of that to the classroom teacher to be able to, um, you know, set, set the course moving forward for that student. Uh, here at the middle school, we utilize, utilize a blended Title I support model, where we have an ELA Title I teacher who, who works both within the classroom setting, as well as, um, at, at the tutoring level. She meets with small groups, um, to be able to provide intensive support. We continue to use star reading data, uh, to progress monitor, as well as to inform instruction on our students' reading growth. As a, a district initiative, we are increasing our use of standards aligned with common assessments, in particular to give stu, teachers the opportunity to collaborate on the design of the assessment, to, to talk about, uh, the grading rubric, to, uh, make sure everything is aligned to the standards, uh, to then analyze the data and develop support plans for students who have not yet met the standards. Uh, and we continue to focus on ever building our repertoire of, uh, best and inclusive practices with an emphasis on supporting students with high needs.
How far along are you in common assessments?
So right now, we are, I think, for ELA, we are working on our fall common assessment. Um, in some grades, they were just delivered last week, and others, they are, we have a target date of, uh, November for those, so we're pretty well.
Pretty well on with us.
Yep. Thank you. So before I turn anything.
Can I ask a follow-up question on Gordon's? Are we using that data not only to see, um, for grade level trends, but also for cohort trends?
And again, as well as for teachers to engage in high-level discussions about best practices and, and ways to, to best support our students, as well as to challenge students who are ready for, for the next level.
How's it going with teachers out of curiosity?
How's it going? I actually just had a meeting with teachers the other day, and we, they're excited to talk about it. They're really excited to have the time and to have the emphasis on, and our school structures are supporting them to be able to, to do that work. Thank you. So let me turn things over to our middle school principal. There we go.
And Gordon, to your question too, um, we've been having, I've been having teachers actually look at MCAS questions and actually do them, because I think it's one thing to talk about the data, but it's another thing to see the multi-step cognitively demanding questions that our students are struggling with. You know, the, the lesser, more recall and, you know, literary, literal questions that are on there, we're doing really well on, so that's going to come up here as well. Um, in the math results for the middle school, 47% of our students in grade seven, eight are meeting and exceeding expectations compared to 40% statewide. Um, you can see, if you look, if you squint your eyes, you can see that our blue exceeding expectations category did rise this year, and we're really proud of that. Um, we want to look at accelerated learners too, and how they're faring, and how we can keep pushing them ahead. Um, you can see that we're on the slow but steady pace of moving forward here from 2021 to 2023. Um, again, our goal will consistently be 70%. It would really be nice for all of our students, right, to be exceeding or meeting the standards.
All right, and then at the high school level, uh, 50%, 55%, excuse me, of our students are meeting or exceeding, which is 5% above the state average. Uh, again, looking at that blue exceeding expectations, much like the middle school, we saw some significant growth there. Uh, unfortunately, as we move towards our 70% goal as a school, we did see a little bit of a decline in that. We went from 61% down to 55% this year, so even though we're still performing above the state average, um, as a school, um, we did drop a little bit this year.
Question?
Yep.
Okay, um, and this could be for any of you who've analyzed the data. Uh, are we also looking at the, uh, like districts profiles, not just the state average, when we're analyzing the data? Okay.
Typically, the DART data isn't refreshed until November?
Yeah, it trails this a little bit, but yes, we do use the DART data.
So on the math decline, um, is there, do we know yet anything about whether that is sort of, uh, maybe endemic to our students or something sort of, um, test waters? And the reason I ask that, like in York, for instance, when they first adopted PARC, um, their acceptable rates dropped through the floor, in part because, um, PARC's questions, um, were a lot more multidimensional, and, um, and it added layers of difficulty that students aren't necessarily prepared for, so, you know, the test version.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look, again, we're squinting at all of these, and I apologize, but if you look at the trends, our school declined, but so did the state, right? So it, I, not to say that it's a good thing, but it's, it's not unique to us. Um, and then I think, you know, what Becky and I want to speak to today on behalf of our math department are, what are our next steps to address, um, the decline at the high school, but how can we continue to move the needle up those schools, right? And so identifying, like ELA department, what are those low scoring areas on the MCAS exam, specifically analyzing those multi-step MCAS questions. For us, it's also looking at this current cohort of students. So we have years of data to go back to, but we want to know and evaluate where this year students will be taking the test, where do their strengths and weaknesses lie? And so we can use tools like iXL or EduLastic to determine, um, areas that they need, need more support in, and our math teachers are developing their student learning goals around those needs.
We also have, oh, go ahead.
This is a little bit of a different type of question, but I know historically, we have gone out to graduates at some point and asked them how they're faring in the world or in, in college, what have you. Have we gotten feedback to give us an idea of how, particularly in, in math, how our graduates are, are weathering?
how our graduates are weathering second, you know, secondary education?
Yeah. So formally, we survey our students who have graduated from our CTE program and our special education students. We don't have a formal process in place to survey our entire graduate class. But we do, I would say, anecdotally, we have students who come back and speak to our undergraduates every year, underclassmen every year who are in pre-med programs, organic science, or engineering programs. And they come back and what we consistently hear, I mean, going back 10 years now, is they feel so much more prepared for those classes than their classmates who graduated from other schools or from other states because of the access, the curriculum that they had in our school. So again, it's anecdotal. I don't have any numbers to show you, but that would be something certainly to look into if we wanted to survey.
I can back you up with that, Lindsay, in her chemistry class at Block Haven was like, everyone's asking questions they don't know the answers to. I feel like I have this course on shoulders.
And I think this is sort of an important anecdotal piece to this discussion because this is giving us data, but this real-world feedback that we're doing something very right. You know, it appears. So it's a little off-topic, but I was just curious.
As Nicole said, we do have also Title I support in classrooms and for tutoring supports in math. Michaela, Ryan, and I had a great meeting with the coordinators this week around focusing on instructional practices and how we're going to level up some of the tasks in classrooms. And of course, making sure that the curriculum and the common assessments are deeply aligned to standards, not just, you know, on surface level. Nicole also talked about common assessments and I just added at the bottom, you know, emphasizing support to students with high needs. So we have more classes in the middle school this year that are co-taught by, in some cases, two special ed teachers, one with a math certification, right? So a math certified teacher who's also a special educator and a special educator, which I think is very helpful for those classes, along with how can we push forward, like our accelerated learners, like I already spoke on. Scott, start. All right.
All right, thank you, everybody. So as since you mentioned at the beginning, statewide, there was a decrease in science. I'm happy to note that Silver Lake did not experience that. A lot of we kind of made some of the gains we want to make. We're trending in a good place. So here at the middle school, 46% of students, we mean, are exceeding as compared to 41% of students statewide. And then I always put the caveat on, a lot of you know, the eighth grade test is a three-year test, except today. So it's a little bit of a newly tested time, but the teachers really dig into it and do a good job of trying to fill in some gaps. We also, in science, we're met with the perfect storm where we had an MCAS change during COVID or just before COVID. So I see Jason shaking his head. So it was tricky, but again, I think teachers persevered through it really nicely. So at the middle school, you can see from 21 to 23, moderate increase, 44 to 46%. Again, continuing to work towards 70%. Like I said, I think the teachers have been doing a good job of just trying to identify what's up, you know, what's working, what's not, in the sense that we had a curriculum change and we had some COVID students moving through our ranks and sort of maintained this level.
Jason? So with the understanding of moving to open SIAE and the being more of an inquiry-based constructiveness methodology, what's we doing to make sure we're monitoring potential gaps in the curriculum with an adjustment of practice? And also, what are we doing to support the teachers kind of with this new philosophy of classroom instruction?
So it's a good question, and it does bring up a real, a really identified aspect of what can say that all schools who are piloting it or now doing it are seeing. I think one of the things that we've put in place, that we've had in place for a couple of years with both middle school as well as my freshman physics teachers is they actually asked me to grab onto the Edulastic platform as an assessment tool. And I don't just rely on it, but we really use it as a great standards-aligned tool that produces questions that are very much aligned towards what we see on MCAS, so more thoughtful, deeper level of knowledge types of questions. We've built out a number of assessments, we're continuing to put those in place. And so even as we finish an open SIAE unit, we'll use their assessment to see how the kids are doing with that at different sort of aspects of thinking, but also throw out our own as well and see how are they prepared for the MCAS now. So a different level of questioning. Then of course, in two years, they're going to change our eighth grade MCAS, so we've got to look forward to. That's for another school committee. So that's where we are. The high school, there's only two years of data up here in 2021, they revert back to the legacy score, so that's not on here as a comparison. So we saw a nice jump from 46 to 52%. That's exactly in line with what the state saw, 52% exceeding expectations. And again, I think teachers did a good job of trying to identify with a short amount of data, their science teachers, they look for trends in a short amount of data, trying to see what holes there were, what we need to fill, how do we get moving in a better direction. And so some of the things, our next steps, it's still here, the transition, we're really not transitioning anymore, but we're looking at our data as it's new with the new MCAS, the new types of questions, and making sure that we're delivering the content in the right way and we're assessing students in the right way and they're ready for these types of questions, deeper level of thinking. We do always just continue to unpack MCAS results, do the item analysis, the teachers really dig into that and reflect on what they've been doing in the classroom, what happened last year, how to make it better this year. As I said, Edulastic, I was really happy when teachers, teachers asked me for it. I sort of pitched it, but it just is a great sort of a way of gauging our students. We've now started using 7th and 8th grade as a sort of a modified benchmark test, give you a test at the end and the beginning of the year to sort of see how they ended, how they begin. And that's really just not for the students, but more for us for data gathering. Because it's a three-year exam, three-year test, we want to sort of see what level of knowledge students have coming out and have going in. And then the performance task, that's a big one. And that is really where science is going, it's where all of education is going. So we're continuing to implement those that are highly aligned and are still standards-aligned so that when students are ready for MCAS, they go to MCAS, it's not just they can answer the question, but they can think through the question. So we're really pushing those types of tasks in the classroom.
Thank you, Scott.
The next slide, just a reminder, has been explained about the graduation requirement. That's just called the competency determination, that if you're a senior this year, you need to have passed the ELA MCAS, the math MCAS as sophomores. And then as a freshman, physics or biology, which we offer here. So it's just a reminder that that's what those students need to do to graduate. As Scott has said, in the future, they're phasing out, only physics and biology will be offered. So this is just the state reminding us that they're phasing out those previous science MCAS. And this is what students would need to do to graduate. There's no change, it's just a reminder that the MCAS is a graduation requirement. And if students aren't proficient, we're obligated to make educational proficiency plans in ELA and math to talk about how students are proficient, even though they haven't met the proficiency on the MCAS. And our guidance department works with our teachers to do that. Is there a last slide? Kayla, Bethany?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we work together, which was a great experience, to align our goals, all 7 through 12. So we kind of talked about this, but we would, we expect our teachers' tasks to be cognitively demanding, right? To match the same stamina that's needed in MCAS. Doesn't always, of course, there's novice learners, of course, that need certain levels of scaffolding. But we're asking for not only teachers to promote higher-order thinking in their questioning, analyzing, synthesizing, but for students to also ask hard questions to each other and to agree, disagree, defend arguments, right? We want students to question their learning, where they cite their sources. And we hope that our adults in society do that as well. So we're hoping to do that here at this level and also continue that or align it with our common assessments.
Some additional support structures that we'll have in place for both schools. Our professional learning opportunities for coordinators and our teachers, that will happen regularly. We have weekly learning walks where we focus on those instructional focus areas. These are conducted by members of our admin team alongside our coordinators. Ryan and Jill join us from time to time as well. And it provides us an opportunity to see snapshots of classrooms, immediately debrief and provide feedbacks to our teachers. And then use those to really drive future department and faculty meetings and creating those agendas together so that they remain focused and working towards our goal of meeting that 70%. An additional support structure is our co-teaching classrooms, providing mentor coaching and guidance to our paraeducators to really make sure that we are supporting all of our students and moving that needle with our, some of our subgroups.
So our outcomes, right, are high levels of student engagement and yes, proficiency, student confidence, which is what some of you talked about. And, you know, we want productive, highly motivated, engaging citizens. And that's what we're trying to release to you after they graduate from high school. So we think that we can continue to work on that here and build their stamina and confidence to get there. That's it?
Any other questions, comments? No? Well, thank you. Becky, we continuing with you?
Sure.
Michaela did her principal update while.
You were saying lies. Actually, my good credit's Mr. Reisfelder because he got that student out of here right away with another student and that was embarrassing. That was amazing. It was all amazing. I'm still sweating. So in the packet, I did, in your drive, I did add an update for the anti-bullying efforts at the middle school. You know, I did put, and I think one of the pictures got deleted or misplaced on the document, but I did put some Second Step lessons in here. And Mr. Reisfelder and Scott, who just walked away. Well, there you are, did the Second Step lesson today.
I did. We talked about, oh my God, this is, this is like an interpretive camera.
He says the kids were talking so much. It's a 25-minute lesson. It took at least 50 minutes.
Did what you, did what you, okay, turn, share, once you talk, okay, 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 okay. That's a good idea. So we had a good time.
So it was really great, and I want to give an update about that family member that did come forward. We've been in contact every two weeks or even more than that. And things are going very well. So I just wanted to let you know that and give you that information. This link on here does also give you the research behind Second Step if you want to read that at your leisure. I also want to honor two of our teachers. Chris Daley retired on September 5th. He was an agent civics teacher, agent civilization. Notice how I put those things together at 704 Cam. Janice Bracken is also retiring November 3rd after a long history of being our special education teacher here. We will miss both of them. Lastly, I do have an out-of-state field trip request. Part of what we're trying to do is make field trips more equitable for our whole student experience, student body. So last year, I know you probably remember that 73, the Sharks, went to Canterbury Lake Park. And they do have plenty of reasons of how they make that curriculum connected in June. Mr. Reisfelder, as one of our admin interns here, and a couple of other team members have taken that on. And we're going to try and make that a full-on seventh grade experience. We're still looking for something in regards to eighth grade, if you have any ideas around here around Plymouth for like an eighth grade excursion. But the Canterbury Lake Park is in New Hampshire, so I just need to request, we don't have the date yet, but I need to request that because it is over.
I want you to approve the Canterbury Lake field trip, whether it's curriculum tied or not.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's going to SCL.
There's a lot of science stuff on here, so.
Put them in the thing that spins and tell them about.
Moving on, Director of Business Services.
Thank you. In tonight's electronic package under 78, you'll see there's a financial, we did not receive a financial last month, last time that we met, but there's a financial in this package. And I just wanted to mention to you that it's been a pretty uneventful financial year for us with the FY '24 budget. There are a handful of deficits, there are a handful of accounts that have a total deficit of $10,000 that are scattered throughout the budget that will be easily absorbed within their function code year, that should not be a concern. A couple of items I wanted to bring to your attention on the last page. There are some contracted services that we're paying for from middle school that are exceeding to be a budgeted. We believe we will accommodate for everything that we know to the end of the year, so that number should not grow by too much. The second item that's there is there is a high school contracted service accounts of the special education area also. That has a deficit currently that's over $20,000, but that's tied to the story that we've had to get a full-time school psychologist. And so there's testing that needs to be done, the testing is paid for out of this area, but there will be a salary savings elsewhere in the budget. So in the end, that will offset that. At this time, this is all there is to present, there isn't anything, there's not much else that we're, we're trying to come up with, we're aware of. We're doing okay. Are there any questions?
Motion to accept Christine's report is presented.
Scott.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? Thank you.
All right, then, I want to talk about revolving accounts now. Our chair last meeting asked, we just, we talked about revolving accounts, the current accounts that we have. And also, when you package under 78, there is a copy of the current revolving accounts that we use here at Silver Lake. The way they're organized is the first grouping of revolving accounts start with R05000. Those are applied generally to our total, our total events that can apply to all. So you see there, we have, the net revenue credit is actually there. We use that as a holding place for the revenues that can be virtually expensed that we have to make to buy the energy credits. The Chromebook holding account is for the insurance that students pay for their Chromebooks, and we purchase supplies out of that, so additional supplies that we need, we use those ones to offset that. Then you'll see there's the athletic revolving. And under athletic and cafeteria, we have multiple accounts for the way revenue comes in because it could be game receipts, it could be user fees, or for cafeteria, it could be federal funding that we receive, or it could be funds that are coming in from students. So there are multiple, this is just a summarized version because there are many different types of ways revenues are raised, as well as how we make expenditures. Under athletic, it could be from paying for officials, paying for uniforms, paying for ice time. So it's a wide variety, but that's, they all fall into this one grouping, but we do separate it for reporting purposes, the types of activity that exist there. The next grouping you'll see is references R05002. In our world, the 002 means special education. All of those revolving accounts are related to special education. These are like, these are all self-sustaining funds where revenue is generated primarily through tuitions in this grouping. And those tuitions pay for the staffing, any supplies that might be needed, any contracted services that might be needed. And then you'll see that these are referenced by which school they're physically located at. So these are the programs that we have that are happening at the elementary school as well as the middle school and the high school. The final category, which is referenced as R05003, 003 means CTE or vocational. So those all fall under that piece of our world. And adult education is the night classes that we have. Driver education, where we grew where it was the driver education class for students at Silver Lake. That runs during the school year as well as summertime. And then CTP has a variety of categories depending on which shop is providing that activity. For instance, it may be culinary arts where they prepare orders and sell those orders to the school or to the outside folks. Or if you bring a car in to get work done in the auto shop, or you have a carpentry project done. So there are individual revolving accounts with those different types of activities. Again, revolving account by definition should be self-sustaining. So the revenue should be supporting the activities that are taken care of under that. And that's our goal. So at the end of the year, we make sure that if there's a department that has to be built for tuition or any other activity, that they're taking care of that, so at the end of the year, they have a positive balance. One thing we should keep in mind is when we do the annual certification or our excess deficiency, any deficits here are used as an offset to our E and D account. And then it'll clear up the following year when the revenues finally come in. Are there any questions on that? Just kind of a brief little overview of the revolving accounts?
So I have a couple, but Jason, you had to ask. So I have a couple, but Jason, you had asked at the last meeting if we had done a motion successfully to fold these under SAFER. And we, and we did. I had recalled that after we left this meeting, I did recall that. So I believe that these will slide under the overview, if you will, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks. Take your break.
I never knew revolving accounts existed until a number of years ago. It, it came before the school committee because the cafeteria revolving account was in the red. And that prompted the members of the school committee at the time, you might have actually been on with me, Mark, that prompted the members of the school committee to actually say, what is a revolving accounts outside of our operating budget? How would we know unless you came forward, something was in the red, you know, what's the oversight, et cetera? So periodically after that, we used to meet probably once a year or so. There was a group of two or three of us from the school committee that would sit down with the superintendent and Christine and review the revolving accounts. I bring them to your attention, and I wanted Christine to just share a little bit about them with you, A, first of all, before they fold under SAFER, but also as people, both staff and school committee members move on to other things and no longer here, we need some, we need some education, we need some history absorbed by the newer members to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. So these accounts outside of the operating budget do exist. We did motion to have them, again, fall under SAFER. Christine, are these ever looked at in the annual audit?
Oh, yes, they are reviewed heavily, yes.
Okay, so they're captured there, they're reviewed there?
They are part of our annual audit that happens. They're part of what's reported to Jessica for end of year report information. They are, they have a spotlight on them.
Okay, all right. So there's oversight, there's that type of oversight?
Yes, there is a lot of oversight.
Mark?
At what point annually, monthly calendar, it would be the best time for you to present it, the synopsis that corresponded to getting ready for your audit?
The correspondent?
Getting ready for your audit. You can review these as a subcommittee.
Well, I guess it would depend on the intention of the review. Is it just an awareness that they exist, or are you reviewing balances, are you?
Well, I'm trying not to create work twice for you. If you're preparing for your audit, there's a timeline that convenient. We'd like to, we did our SAFER agenda tonight, and one of the items we had was fees. And I think one of the subitems under fees would be revolving funds. We should at least bring this up and keep it on our agenda.
I'm thinking just of the timing of the events that happen. So as we're closing our year end at the beginning of July, trying to get ready for audit, trying to get ready for the end of year report, E and D certification, I almost think it'd be better to review it maybe, Mike, this is budget season, though, springtime, just because then everything's been complete on it. It's been properly recorded, if anything popped out at the end of year report, had a chance to review that, if there was a mistake that we made, or just a misunderstanding. I think then it'd be the time to reflect and take a look at and see how our, how the accounts are doing.
Okay, but would you work with the superintendent to come up with one of the months and let us know what would be convenient for you to present? And I assume that if you're going to, if you found a shortfall in these funds, you would be bringing that to our attention at that point?
Well, because it's, most of these accounts are tuition or activity-based, if there was a shortfall, we'd have to look at them, how the program's being run. For instance, and not that this is happening, driver education, if there was a shortfall there, that meant we're, we're not collecting enough in revenue for the, from the students versus what we're paying for costs. So we need to constantly be looking at, what is the cost to run the program and how do we apportion those costs? So these accounts.
But if we're going to change a fee, this committee has to go with that.
If you're changing a fee, so some of these revolving accounts aren't necessarily fee in the sense of athletic fees, where that is voted on by the state. If we're looking at driver education, it's primarily been set by the director of the program who's overseeing what are the costs to run the program, how about what's the participation rate that we have. And that can change depending on the requirements that are changed through the state for driver education. So there are many other factors with that. And then with the special education, it's primarily the number of students in the program versus what it costs to run the program. So that is reviewed every year and adjusted every year depending on what those costs are versus the number of students.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No?
Ironically, we're going to talk about special education a little bit here tonight, and you'll see why those programs that we have here are such a boon to our kids and our children.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Assistant Superintendent?
Just have a quick update on our, our release day on September 28th. Teachers work together on their goals for the year, for their educator plans, as previously shown in the MCAS presentation. There's a lot of focus on common assessments, checking in on student growth and achievement. So educators work together, some for team goals, but many align to this focus. And just wanted to provide an update on how time was used on that day.
Any questions, comments? Nope. Superintendent?
Thank you. The first item in your packet is a copy of the goals that were shared with the administrative review team in September. And on this are several areas that I will be working on this year, as well as evidence from meeting student learning goals that are highlighted in there. The second item in your packet is a homeschool enrollment chart. Grades K through six. You'll notice that there, in total, is a decline overall by five students since, from last year, moving from 40 students in all of our towns and districts to 35 students in total. Homeschool enrollment, however, in grades seven through 12 has gone up by one student. And you can see Kingston, highlighted in green, has gone down. Halifax, highlighted in yellow, grades seven through 12, I should, I should note. And then Plimpton, grade seven through 12, has actually gone up by three students.
One question? Do you know, are they the same students that are staying home schooled year after year?
We have a lot of, we have a lot of students who apply every year for homeschooling. Yeah, we have families that have been involved in homeschooling for a number of years. Every now and then, we, we get a new student or a new parent who inquires about us what the process may be, and we provide that information to them. The next item is the October 1st enrollment. And there's a twist to this year's October 1st enrollment. You have two charts in there, and I'll explain why. The first chart includes pre-K. This chart was created if, in fact, all of the towns vote to approve the regional agreement, the changes that we have proposed to the regional agreement and incorporating pre-K officially into Silver Lake. So you'll notice in blue, we kept them in grade order so that our elementary schools could see the potential impact of things like kindergarten. But it's highlighted in blue so that you know that it's part of, in theory, will be part of Silver Lake. The students are listed there out by town. And a corresponding Union 31 in Silver Lake with pre-K enrollments chart is also in there. So you'll notice for 25, Halifax increases for the Silver Lake assessment percentage. Kingston goes down. Plimpton is going down. In the shared cost percentages, Halifax is going down, Kingston is going up, and Plimpton is going up. So that's what it looks like with pre-K added. If we were to skip over the enrollment chart, I'm going to go next to the October 1st enrollment without pre-K, so that you can see those numbers listed there, so you can see the impact on Silver Lake and each of the towns. And then you see the impact of the towns without pre-K with the FY '25 assessments for Halifax going up, Kingston going down slightly, and Plimpton going down. In terms of the shared cost percentages, Halifax would be going down, Kingston would be going up, and Plimpton would be going up in percentages based upon the student enrollment numbers. The next two charts are traditional enrollment charts that we provide to you. However, one is with pre-K and one is out without pre-K as we transition, right? Because we don't know what numbers we're actually going to be looking at yet. So without pre-K, if you look at the total enrollments for Kingston, Plimpton, Halifax, grades K through six, you can see Kingston is in the green, Halifax is in the yellow, and Plimpton is in the orange. And those numbers, you can chart their, their enrollment numbers from 2013 all the way through 2023. If you look at the secondary numbers in this chart, we would be adding the pre-K to our overall total numbers. And so you're going to see how those numbers play out by town on this chart as well. The fourth and final chart, I think there were four, maybe five, is the Halifax, Kingston, Plimpton student enrollment K through six. Again, pre-K is not included in these numbers, but if you look at seven through 12, this is what the numbers would be without pre-K included. Interestingly enough, in the charts that Karen and I looked at, pre-K was never included in these charts for as far back as we can find. Yeah, that's, so it's important that we continue to think about how, you know, what we need to do to make sure that this is, if approved, that this is truly inclusive of all of our numbers and staff and students. The, also in your budget is the timeline for the budget development. We have already requested input from our principals. We have already started meetings with our special education team, our technology director, our director of facilities. Coordinators and department heads are working with the building principals to provide input for the building principals to develop their budgets. The SAFER committee has been reviewing and continues to review and update the capital plan. And on November 16th, we will have a joint presentation where our technology director, our director of student services, and for the elementary schools, Melissa Farrell will present a curriculum instruction and assessment budget for the elementary schools as well that evening. It's this time of year that I usually ask the school committee if you have any goals for us with regards to the budget and what you would like to see as part of our presentations as we begin our preparations.
I was just wanting to understand better what the current configuration of special ed teachers is at the middle school, and whether or not the middle school's special ed teachers are aligned with their POTS, or if we are kind of out of luck because of the service delivery that we're currently able to give with the personnel we have on hand.
So last year, when I came forward for the budget, I did ask for an additional special ed teacher. That was not written in this current school year's budget. So we have six POTS and five special educators. Have different, I have aligned them a little bit differently with their, their certification areas and the creative co-teaching model so that every team does have some support. We are also taking data, I talked to Dr. Panerisi about this, we're taking data on how many students are being tested, because I did also, it's probably more information than I asked for, Jason. I did also reroute a teacher to co-teach some periods and test students the other half of the day, because I, we do not want teachers missing out on services to test kids. And so that was a creative piece that I put in place, but Christine and I are going to be looking at that data and see if there's other things we need to do to keep teacher servicing kids and not testing or doing other things.
But we are intending on running the middle school model here, correct?
Yes.
So do we have special ed teachers as part of the team? For common planning time, for discussing students, do they have the same ability to meet with their classroom teacher counterparts?
So they do and they don't. So there's more limited opportunities for them to meet with their team this year and more opportunities to meet with their department instructional.
But to meet the definition of middle school model, do you agree that we would benefit from having a special ed teacher that could be designated to a team?
I could always benefit from a sixth special ed teacher, and yes, I could probably reroute the schedule so that they would be in not only team meetings, but in department meetings.
So just, just the difference between junior high and middle school's concept of having kids, yes, having subject-specific teachers, but also having those kids cohorted together so teachers can discuss those individual students and monitor trends they're seeing academically in those students and also socially emotionally in those students. That's the big difference between a middle school and a junior high model. And if we intend to be a true middle school, I think in this day and age, especially in some of the MCAS data we saw, which didn't really get into some groups, I think we really need to explore our model for special ed at the middle school level. I dug into some group reporting on our MCAS data, and it's an area where we still need to pay some careful attention to. The data varies a lot, and our job as a school committee is literally student achievement, right? That's our number one mission as a school committee, is to promote student achievement. And I would say this might be one of the areas where we get the most bang for our pocket student achievement. So I'd like to see you explore adding that position into the budget. Please.
Thank you for that, Jason. Any other budget thoughts?
Yep.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Michaela, I know it's a little early, you might just be coming up with your building based budget. Do you, do we leave something on the table last year that you really could have utilized and that you're already looking forward to making a presentation about?
Yes, we had, we had talked a little bit last year for some additional staff support for our EL students as well as special ed.
What was that?
EL and special ed.
What kind of full-time equivalents are you looking at in your question?
Becky and I would love, each of us would love to have a full-time EL teacher at our, at each school. Currently, we have one that we split between our buildings, and if you're familiar with our schedules, it is not an easy schedule to split.
Can you just explain what EL stands for, please?
For our English language learners, which our population has significantly increased over the last few years.
Which ironically coincides with another agenda item we have.
Thank you, Jason.
I guess I would just make probably my annual comment. I know we might create more work by starting the budget process with not luxuries and pie in the sky requests, but what, what would you need, what would you like, like we were just discussing, to, in the budget, to educate our kids, knowing that under most circumstances, we go through a couple of iterations of, you know, taking things out, moving things around, you know, negotiating things. I myself always like to see if, if we didn't have any financial constraints, what would, what would a solid budget meeting the student educational needs look like? Again, without luxuries. I think it's important for us to see that as a community and as a school committee, because as we pare back, we know what we're, what we're giving up. And sometimes maybe it comes back the next year as something that we feel more strongly about including. So as much as it is a lot of work for you folks and a lot of work for... So as much as it is a lot of work for you folks and a lot of work for, you know, Christine and Sarah and everybody putting that together, I think it's just important to see, this is what we would like. It's probably not all going to be approved, but I think it's so important for us to understand what it is you need to, you know, make Silver Lake operate in the best way forward, you know, the best way possible for the kids.
And we appreciate the opportunity to be able to advocate for our students. We know this committee does a lot of work on their behalf.
I think it's important for us to frame the discussion overly long, but last year we had a boom from the state of over $700,000 extra dollars. And we were very thoughtful and purposeful as to how we used those funds. And we were very conscious also of the town's requests for a little breathing. Halifax's increase from us was less than 1% last year. Kingston's percentage was 2.64 and Plimpton's was 6.1, but the year before it was at negative 7.2. We are not in austerity. I think it is time to continue investing in our schools and not to wait for when it's coming. I think this year we need to present a budget of our needs and what's in the best interest of these kids, day in and day out. And I'd like to see the town support us in doing that. As we supported them last year, we're not going to let that go to the other side of the budget as well. So I think we need to just remember that message from last year. We very purposely did that to disagree with what our towns.
Any other comments going into the budget season? I hope that was helpful.
It was.
Okay.
Thank you.
New business, subcommittee description matrix. I did not actually put anything in the, on the link for this tonight. Jason and I had worked a couple of years ago coming up with descriptions of the subcommittees in a kind of a gauge of how much time commitment people need to be aware of working on a subcommittee. I would like to have that information refreshed and put in more of a table or matrix format so that at the beginning of every new reorg, we can hand that out, people can be comfortable with the subcommittees, what they're about, the time commitment, et cetera. So I want to move that to the December agenda. We have, you know, kind of a lot to go through tonight.
Would you like me to do the work on that?
I'm sorry?
Would you like me to refresh that, to bring to?
I have started to, if I could bounce it off of you like we did last time when we came up with like a Word document, that'd be great. Thank you.
Would it be a violation of open meeting law if those of us serving on subcommittees with significant time commitments, if we forwarded any information on it, if it was only to one of you? This is what's involved in working on this?
No, because it's not deliberation of business that would come toward the school committee. It's just an expression of the duty of filling that office. No, that would not be a violation.
Okay, so if I email one of both of you?
The both of us would be great if you don't mind. Thanks. And that's a good question. Okay, next, under new business, Jason, I'll hand this one over to you. This was a request for an agenda writing from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we've all recognized the fact that our population in our three towns has been shifting over the past several years. And as I was analyzing the NCAS data, you know, one of the things I do is I also look at subcategory reporting. So when you have enough students that you would not risk exposing their anonymity, data can be reported in subgroups. And we have two subgroups that popped up on the data as I looked at it, one was special education and the other one was students who identify as having Hispanic origin. In the line item budget, the school committee has money and some of that money is intended to be used for professional development. In the past, we've used those funds to send people to conferences, to workshops. There are school districts in Massachusetts who send people to the National School Boards Association, which have the cost of thousands of dollars per individual member for professional development. We have not utilized that fund in that regard. We have sent some people down to Cape Cod and asked, we've asked them to pay their own fuel and don't stay overnight, come home for registration. But there is a National Hispanic Council that is run by the NSBA and it costs $75 for an individual to join. And I am requesting from the committee tonight permission to spend $75 to sign myself up. And I would encourage any of you who are interested in joining to ask the school committee to do the same thing. The $75 would allow me the ability to participate in any person and virtual professional development that revolves around issues facing students who identify as Hispanic, Latino, or even Brazilian. So it's a wide-ranging coverage of individuals and I really think as a school committee member, again, my job is achievement for all students. If there are any pieces of information I could glean for $75 for a year's worth of professional development that might benefit this group of students, I would be humbled to participate and bring that information back to town.
I would do that too.
As would I. That would be, and it's actually one person from each town coincidentally, so that's actually kind of a nice sample.
So it would be $75 each.
It's $2.25. Any further discussion on this?
So can I please make the motion to allow myself, Gordon, Amy to apply to the NSBA, National Hispanic Council and then submit reimbursement to the district board?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you, folks, for volunteering for that. Jason, thank you for bringing to our attention.
Thank you. Have a shift.
Next on the agenda, as you know, this has been an ongoing topic, the ratification and the amendment of the regional agreement. Jason spoke last night, last night, to the Plimpton Town Meeting participants and audience. Jason, I'd love for you to recap it. You did an outstanding job last night.
So the preparation for a town meeting in Plimpton has been ongoing and rather intense for the past six weeks. And this has been something we've been discussing openly for about three months now. We've utilized every single board in our town. We've asked the chairs to reach out to their members and explain what's going on here at Silver Lake and what's happening to our pre-K program, the mandate by DESI to codify it into our regional agreement, and the deadline and the stink that DESI has pulled in multiple steps if we don't ratify that agreement. I've been to coffee talks, hope to come, still on aging. Select Board was brought up to speed on this from the get-go. They've done outreach with our elementary PTOs. Our elementary school committee members have done a massive amount of outreach realizing that this would affect them as well. This has been a full court press by every individual who understands that the regional agreement update means. Last night, when we went to town meeting, Plimpton needed a quorum of 35 people. We exceeded the quorum by a long shot. We went and doubled it. We were the only article on our special town meeting. So those people showed up specifically for us to hear about and to discuss the regional agreement and those kids in our pre-K program. I was humbled by the outturn, but I was even more impressed by the fact after I spoke to the article, there was not a single question or comment from the audience. And when the vote was taken, every single hand raised in the affirmative and it passed unanimously in the town. That didn't happen by accident. That happened because of the outreach done by the members of my community who understood this. And I implore all of you from Halifax and Kingston to continue that full court press to get the message out. It was a very simple message. The program that we have at Silver Lake right now for our integrated pre-K program is not only a legal requirement, but it has benefited countless children in our school districts over the past 50-plus years. And we're simply asking to codify it in our regional agreement, per DESI's requirement. It's not that complicated, but people who don't understand, who don't have the information in front of them, might not show up or might cause some consternation at town meeting if you don't really put the information out there and are willing to sit down with people and answer questions beforehand. I spent three hours with one person just to make sure they understood. It was time well spent. And last night, there were people shaking hands, hugging, and cheering at the end of our report. So I just wanted to pass that good news on to you, but also to, again, implore you, don't let the fork off the pedal until you prosecute.
Thank you, Jason. You did a wonderful job last night. And I've never participated in a town meeting that literally after the pledge of allegiance and certain announcements literally lasted maybe six minutes. I can't even imagine Halifax having six minutes.
We like double headers.
And, you know, Russ was there, Jill was there, Christine was there, I was there for moral support. So had there been questions, there were plenty of resources to support Jason. The same set of folks will be at Kingston and the same set of folks will be at Halifax. I think we've done a good job sharing the information and talking to the FinComs and the Board of Selectmen of the towns. I think the town officials understand what's going on, why it has to happen, and I think, you know, in general, they're supportive. I'll tell you, and Gordon and I had this conversation the other night, Halifax, and let me preface this by saying, my kids are now out of college, so I'm not on the fields anymore. I'm not in the thick of it with active, you know, parents with active students in the building. But even the people that I associate with that are voters, this has been very quiet. I haven't heard much in the town at all, for or against. It's sort of, I don't know how well it's really being absorbed. Now, having said that, Halifax Town Meeting is December 14th. So it's something that you can, you know, maybe people are not even giving it any thought. Kingston is next week. I've chatted with a couple of folks, town officials from Kingston. Again, there's support. I'm not sure that you're hearing anything on the fields from parents.
I'm hearing when I bring it up, "Oh, I didn't realize it was that important," over and over again. I'm bringing it up with everybody I run into, unfortunately, it's not that many people, but every time I run into someone, I'm bringing it up and, "Please come up to town meeting if you can, please support us, it's vitally important." And there's a lot of people who think that, you know, they elect us to do the work and then that's the end of their obligation. So I've been really stressing to everybody. What I want to know is, do we have permission to share this FAQ publicly, social media? Can we post it in town locals or is it a private document?
Well, that's what, part of what we want to talk about tonight. You know, Mark actually had asked for a question and answer sheet some time ago, so one has been prepared. In an effort to start to get some discussion and get some answers out there, I would promote the idea, if the committee is in agreement, that this information posted on our website, of course, it's part of tonight's meeting anyway, so we're being videotaped tonight and we made sure that we would be to try and get information out there. I think it would be helpful to have some of this information put out there on social media. Now, you're gonna, go ahead.
No, I'm not gonna. I just want to tell you what happened at Plimpton. This weeknight, 7 o'clock, I would say the average age in our audience was senior citizens. Thank you for showing up, Council on Aging. Lucas and I and Paula went to a breakfast at the library in Plimpton, which is generally open to the public, but largely attended by our senior citizens and members of Council on the Aging. They're who showed up. They're the ones who had the time to be there in the evening and they showed up. People who have not had kids in our district in 50 years, some of them, showed up and they voted in favor of this. And they didn't get the information up from the internet and I'm not saying don't do that. But I really think we need to draw the strategy, right? I think we need to utilize the PTOs and I think the Kingston, the Halifax representatives of this school committee, it is your job to push this across the finish line and utilize those networks you have. We had people in town who were just using their email chains with their own friends in town and they kept propagating and pushing it out. It was coming into the inboxes from a friend, not from a random school committee guy that they don't really know, you know, with a friendly little message, you know? It's so, to us, concrete, but to people who don't live and breathe the regional agreement and what it signifies, it's so abstract and difficult to understand why this is a question.
Now, in the meetings we've had over the summer, and the summer is a difficult time to have a topic like this talked about because you, you know, you do miss quite a bit of an audience there. But during the summer, when we brought the joint committee together, that wasn't just to, you know, use their time unwisely, it was also so the elementary school committee members could assist us here. So PTO, elementary school committee, et cetera. Halifax approached us to do sort of a recorded question and answer session so that it could be broadcast in Halifax, which we're trying to look at a date that that works because, again, Halifax has more time. December 14th is a scary date, though. We did, Russ, you know, prompted us to go out to Halifax and ask them to pencil in another date that would work in case for any reason, illness, snowstorm, you know, whatever. December 14th is postponed because we can't go over the threshold of December 31st. We have to have this, you know, approved and buttoned down. So Kingston being next week, we have the questions and answers. I think, I agree with what you're saying, Jason. I think we do need to cast a wide net and try and get all different, you know, age ranges to understand this. But I think certainly, you know, social media for a lot of parents is a way that they are getting information, so.
We need to have a conversation then about replying. If you post anything on social media, even as an individual, you're not. Your own personal account, there's no such thing. You're a public official. So you want to make sure that the document you're putting up is as crystal clear as possible because most likely you're going to have to let comments delay or you're going to have to Sarah get to answering those questions for you. You can check with Russ, but I'm pretty darn sure that would be a violation of the open meeting law.
Especially if more than one committee member joins.
It's even a fine line there, you know? It's very dangerous.
Yeah, I don't know that I would want to get into answering the questions.
That's why we had our PTOs put it up in Plimpton. We did have school committee members put up a PTO.
So if we could do something like maybe post on a personal page or reach out to local friends and ask them to post this?
I would not post it on your personal page.
Yeah, I was thinking that, I was thinking more public page. I wouldn't post it on my personal either.
But we could. But we could share this with friends to then post.
Yeah.
Is it available anywhere to the presentations that you've already made? You said you had a question and answer that was done for Halifax?
We've been asked to.
So we had a Q and A here in this meeting, but unfortunately it wasn't recorded. We invited members of the town to that meeting as well, where we talked about the potential impact for pre-K. And we have put together some frequently asked questions. And I think we need to make sure we're all in agreement as to what questions should appear on the FAQ before it goes out anywhere. And then Halifax, he was, the town administrator was basically asking us if we would be interested in doing a Q and A related to the regional agreement. And I forward that to Paula.
Yep.
Well, it means between now and next Tuesday, is there an opportunity to put something up on Town Meeting for on Tuesday or have something that's on public television this weekend? If it would be out there, is there any kind of presentation?
I think the best we'd have is this document.
Yeah.
What's that?
The best we'd have is this document. We do have a Q and A in the package. And I think part of the point was just in our discussion here to look through this and see, is there anything that we would want to adjust about this or change? Or is everybody good with it to be able to take that forward?
And then pass it by Russ before?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the superintendent with the chair to review the document and to publish it when they feel it's appropriate, right? And to adjust it when necessary.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just one thing. Timeline here is really, really tight when it comes to Kingston. We've got basically three business days and that's including the day of Town Meeting itself. So if we're talking about editing it, running it by Russ again, I'll vote yes. It needs to be like, yeah, we need this, we need the approved copy. Turn around really quickly.
Yeah, and another just piece of information, Plunkton generated its own awkward book. You know, we had gleaned from all of our conversations and, you know, meetings that we've had. And we published our own. We chose not to put it on social media. We distributed it via email very deliberately, again, to avoid the ridiculous comments that some Facebook companies like put out there who never actually show up to talk. We didn't want to bother engaging with those people.
Yeah, that's always a danger.
If this document had a title, talk about what they frequently ask questions on, for example. I mean, give your handout for Town Meeting.
I agree.
And hard copy first, as Jason pointed out. The people who serve at Town Meeting are going to pick up materials on the table on the way in. They're going to vote on what they're going to read while they're waiting to get out of the office in Kingston. So unless this can be, you know, simulated, at least set on the website for Kingston, I wouldn't spend a lot of time going out on social media because I think it could have a negative effect, too. Like Jason said, again, people making responses that don't really understand or have any threat. I would say a handout of Town Meeting is going to be most effective.
Okay. So do we want to stay off social media then? One thing that hurt us as well was, as Jill indicated, our last discussion, our last committee meeting, we had a pretty robust discussion on this topic, however, we weren't recorded. So it wouldn't...
I think most people are looking for the nuts and the bolts in it when they come to vote. They're not going to analyze a lot of the material. They need a synopsis of what this agreement means, what this change means, what it's going to cost and what the advantages of it are. And I think you could do that in half a page, to be honest. I think overselling this is not going to be very effective.
I'll just say that, I don't think anybody I've spoken to knows that this is on the warrant in town.
That's my concern.
I think we at least need to let people know this is, but that... That's the nine people at this table's responsibility. This is not on the finance committees, this is not on the selectmen's, this is not on the administrators. They told us everything they know. We have permission to run later. This is on us, guys, us. This is our article, this is our job. Get the vote up. Like, get the people in the seats who understand. And if they don't understand, take the time to inform them. It is our job. The buck stops with us, okay? So get it done. Get it done. I'm not trying to be mean about it. But the unanimous vote in Plunkton did not happen by accident. There was a lot of preparation. We weren't happy to help anybody wrap their head around it, but come on, guys. You have friends, you have people who trust you, you have people who voted you in. You have networks, tap your networks. Get them to show up.
We still have a motion in the floor?
So Karen, can you read back the motion?
Sure. Jason's motion to allow the superintendent and chair to review the document and publish it appropriately and to make any changes.
Okay.
All right, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So for Kingston Town Meeting, everybody, and I know Jeannie's planning on attending, all four Kingston committee members will be there, right? Next Tuesday night? Okay. I'm not sure who wants to or who will be presenting the article. Jeannie's not here tonight. I'll leave that for you folks to decide, obviously, as your town meeting. Jeannie is comfortable with the topic having been involved since it started from an elementary school committee perspective, so... But you should make a decision before Tuesday who's going to actually open the item.
Is that something that needs to be decided right now in the meeting?
No. I'm just suggesting that somebody know ahead of time that they're going to step up to the microphone. And then there's a second school committee article on the warrant, the transfer of land.
Correct. I'll speak for that. And again, the folks need the meat and potatoes. They don't keep up with a lot of the details. Case of conservation agent will be present and I assume he'll be speaking in favor of that also. Had a late discussion with him regarding it.
Okay. All righty. All right, thank you, folks. Moving on, special committees. John?
Well, good evening, everyone. It's fall, the most wonderful time of the year. It's starting to get cooler out. Got a lot of great events going on at the school, haunted hallways coming up for middle school. Just that spirit week and homecoming at the high school. Getting to the media, teaching and learning. You know, I'm joking with a phrase, but it really is my favorite time to be a teacher. You know, the kids are engaged and it's a great time and everything going around. I just take a quick moment to reiterate SLEA's support of some of the things that Jason was talking about. Specifically, another specialized teacher and another English language learner teacher. Those are things I've talked about in the past. I know we're only setting our budget priorities now, but, you know, Bethany would have to find creative solutions that might violate the middle school model if our special ed faculty was fully staffed. So I think that's real important. And I don't know the numbers, you may want to ask, but if you saw the growth of the number of English language learners that are still being serviced by the same one teacher, it's grown astronomically. So both of those, I think, are huge priorities, definitely for SLEA. And, you know, I think that, like Jason said, it would make a huge impact for the students. I'm very interested, too, to see what the consultant comes back with about the possible full regionalization. We really appreciate, you know, any of that information being shared with us as well. And that was a great presentation about the boys' volleyball. I'm glad that that's going to move forward. If the school committee doesn't want to continue that on a permanent basis, we're certainly more than happy to have that conversation. Thank you.
In fact, I just added one thing. They came to me and asked me for $5 for a bracelet. I wanted to pay my bracelet. How much is the bracelet?
I think if you click on the link, some of the presentation allows you to make it to the...
Okay, Mo?
Something, yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you, John.
I'm sure they appreciate it.
Administrative review.
I am happy to announce I'm no longer the chair of that committee. I really appreciate other members stepping into some leadership roles on the committee. But we did have a meeting, we did review Jill's goals. And I think one of the most important things to bring to the rest of the members' attention is that we did agree with Jill on a two-year ban last year, which means at the end of this year, we will not be having a sit-down to go over our summative evaluation. Instead, we will be having a sit-down to go over a formative evaluation. And just to make sure people are aware of the difference between the two, a formative evaluation is an opportunity to course correct, to make adjustments, practices, to take a look critically at where we are in the progress of the goals and to make sure that supports are in place to help our superintendent meet those goals by the end of her cycle. The summative evaluation is the one that's put into her personnel jacket and becomes permanently part of the record of the school committee. So that's the major difference. Instead of having a half-year formative and then a summative at the end of the year, it is very common practice for a teacher, once they've been in a school district for three years, to be placed on a two-year cycle and a new superintendent should have that same purpose.
All right, thank you. CTE?
Yes, so we've met on September 19th and we had four items on our agenda. Our organization, enrollment update, program updates, and new program discussion. I'm honored I was chosen to be a chair for the next term. Thank you very much to my colleagues. That's number one, reorganization. Number two, enrollment update. Currently, we have 354 CTE students, which is 35% of a high school. Comparing those numbers, usually compare four, five years. It's 2019, we had 300 students, which was 27% of a high school. We had 153 total applicants, 140 from grade eight, and 13 from grade nine. Program updates. Silver Lake Preschool is small and consists of 32 students. Political department will help, is helping Kingston Intermediate School with a courtyard. Our automotive department has a partnership with a CCCC, which is Cape Cod Community College. And four students participate in an aviation maintenance program. They had to take a trip to the Tuleh Airport. And Aliet Hill had a peeling ceremony on 22nd of September. And we will have a full advisory dinner on October 26th, Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. The last item on the agenda was new program discussion. As you guys know, in the past, we made a motion, and I think the motion was unanimous, to open an IT program in our school. During the meeting, our subcommittee meeting, we were presented by administration with alternatives, alternative programs, which were marketing and criminal justice. I can tell you that when I looked at those programs on the screen, I was very disappointed. Currently, the biggest problem the administration brought up that was a salary of a future IT teacher. And I think this is our biggest problem. To compensate somebody for an amount of money, I'm lucky we don't have a problem. That's how I, that's a very small problem. Currently, we have 51 schools that offer CTE program, information, support, services, and networking. Thirty-seven of those schools are chapter 74. We have also 41 schools that offer another IT program. We have two IT programs that we can offer. That's programming and web development. Twenty-five of those schools are chapters 74. So together, we have more than 90 schools that hire IT teachers. Somehow, they can do it. How they open the program, how much are they paying those teachers? How did they fund them? I don't know, but I'm willing to find out. I think we should stick to the original idea like we did before. And I can make another motion to create IT program. We did this motion and it was unanimous. Another thing I would like to bring up, after coming back home and reading about marketing program, CTE marketing program, and criminal justice program, what our students can do after marketing. They can be advertising sales agent or a telemarketing representative. What students can do with a high school, with diploma after criminal justice, they can be security guard or parking reinforcement officer. I really like you guys to focus on future of those kids. I want them to have comfortable job and well-paid job. That's why I strongly support to open CTE program, IT program, and no other that. And if administration is going to approach some obstacles, I think we are here to support administration and to resolve all the obstacles that we can have. That's why I would like to make another motion to start... The first option to start a program is to file intent to apply. The deadline for this is 1st of 2nd October, 1st of October, 1st Monday of October. That was two weeks ago. The next one is going to be one year from now. I would like administration to file intent to apply by the time, by the 1st Monday of October 2024. And this is the motion I would like to make. I'll second that.
And I'm going to open it for discussion, but I want to first just say, Lucas, that was a very passionate argument and presentation. It was very well formulated with a lot of great information. Thank you for that. I'll open it up to anyone who has questions or comments. I don't like to jump in right away myself. I like to sit back.
I think part of what we need to analyze here is what are the obstacles to develop... the obstacles to development of this program. We were privy to some of those in our subcommittee meeting, but I would defer to the administration to articulate them and for us to find solutions to those obstacles as Lucas suggested. I was very impressed by Elliot and Michaela's presentation of the alternatives and understood their concerns around IT, which is chiefly how do we attract a qualified teacher in IT and pay them teacher's salary in Massachusetts? Which is a legitimate question, but as Lucas's research is more known, several school districts in Massachusetts have figured out a way around this. I'd like to provide those same opportunities for my CTE director, my high school principal, and my superintendent of school, if possible, from our side. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I don't necessarily want to do it, but I've actually certified in computer science. Can you use, there's a new teacher certification in computer science that's not a career or technical education. Does anyone know, can you use that certification, or does it have to be someone who comes from the workforce? Because that could be another route.
I can answer a little bit, I don't know, there is a difference between a Chapter 74 program and a Perkins local program. So the teachers for the Chapter 74 program, teacher qualifications for the Chapter 74 program must be licensed to teach a specific career area at the high school level. Their license also requires them to have extensive experience in the field.
Thank you for that, John. That thinking outside the box is always appreciated. Mark.
I'd like to say that our CTE staffing comes with various different industry backgrounds when we hire teachers. And at one point, I was involved in search for a developer to teach it. And the industry was valuable as a teaching skills, but there are some compromises within Chapter 74 that are allowed to get you staffing for the program. And I think this is a big option. I think we should proceed with the goal of getting ourselves enrolled in October 24. But I think this needs a committee to study this. I've participated in committees before, gave a full-day kindergarten in Kingston. It was a lot of work, but it needs to have attention from the school committee and a staff member. And the research that focuses is certainly substantial to investigate other schools. Because in education, we rarely produce the very first of anything, but somebody else has done this. And I think what he brought up is valid. We should look at how to make this work, not how to make it not. So I would propose that we go forward with a study committee with that goal versus the motion that was made at this point, because I think it's a little premature without bringing everything to the committee and certainly support the goal.
Go ahead, John.
If I may, part of that presentation was a lengthy discussion and an explanation of the process that's involved in the vetting that must be done with the state for Chapter 74 programs. I think that when we met with them, they had begun the process of visiting schools. And they cited the example of Attleboro High, who just put in a beautiful new computer technology room, area, and are unable to staff it. I don't believe that the administration is opposed to an IT program or course. They were presenting some of the potential barriers. And I think that, I think it may benefit the committee to hear from our CTE director before making any decisions, because he is our, he is the person who is going to be leading this charge. And so I think it's important, whether it be through the CTE subcommittee or inviting him to one of our meetings, I think it's important for him to speak to this issue.
If I could just add on to that, you know, we appreciate the committee's enthusiasm and the support to add to our CTE programs. One of the things that we presented at that subcommittee meeting, we need to conduct a feasibility study. And the state requires us to take a look at our region and determine if there are potential job placements within that field in our area. And without knowing if that is the case or not, without completing that study, that could be an immediate roadblock that we can't change, no matter how much money we want to pay the potential candidates. I would also add that a vote for only an IT program, an IT teacher, really impacts the ability for me to do my job and advocate for my students. It locks me into having to fill that position without any consideration of space, funding, and prioritizing the needs of students in other areas of our building. You know, Jason, earlier you asked me, what do we need? We have other very important needs in our building. We need to be able to do a full study. I need to be able to work with my leadership team to determine what are the positions that we need. And so I would respectfully ask you to allow me to do my job and advocate for my building needs.
Thank you. So how do we want to move forward? We've got a motion on the table. We've heard from administration. Go ahead, Lucas.
I just would like to use the words that Jason used. Let's just get it done. We cannot wait. I feel like we are, not I feel like, we are further away from opening that program than we were one year ago. One year ago, we had a target to open an IT program. One year passed. Why we cannot open? And if we cannot open because of something, let's fix it. That's how I feel. We are further away from opening this than we were before one year ago. And also, there were voices on the subcommittee meeting that this program needs fixed immune test studies and it needs to be successful, successful for the administration. I can tell you that taking into consideration all the relevant numbers, I guarantee this program will be successful for the administration. But I look at this, this program to be the most successful for our kids, for the kids who graduate, who will finish our school, for their future.
My understanding is that the feasibility is a requirement by the state. It's not something that we can not do. That's my understanding.
We went through it with the healthcare one when we added.
Can it be done in one year, or it's longer than that?
I've never had to do the feasibility study. Again, the person who would have more information about the length of time to do something like that would be Elliot Glass.
Well, when we met at the subcommittee, as part of our presentation, our goal was to have it completed by the spring so that at our next subcommittee meeting, we would be able to make a determination at that point if we were to add a program, and if so, which one would it be? And then we would look for a launch at 26, I believe, because we have to meet those deadlines.
So, Michaela, you would look at the three programs we heard just discussed.
And those were just three that we had initially looked at.
Yep.
Because again, we are limited, I don't know, we are limited.
There's space.
We have no space. I want to be very transparent. We do not have physical space to add like an electrical shop or a plumbing shop. We can certainly get creative with some of our classroom space, but there's a cost to that as well. That means we are putting multiple teachers in a shared classroom, which is conducive, you know, for student learning as well. So we're really restricted to spaces that are, that don't require a typical shop space, right? However, even within those classrooms, there is a square footage minimum requirement that many of these shops have, even if it is a more traditional classroom, like a computer-based one. So that's just where we started with, okay, we know we can probably make room in a classroom, again, it comes at a cost. So that's why we will clean up programs that we know exist, marketing, criminal justice, IT. But there are additional programs. You know, Elliot and I are scheduled to go look at a couple of other schools and talk with other program directors, and we're not limited to just those three. Those just happened to be the three that we were able to see. We collected some information on, we took some pictures of the space, and that we thought, you know, if we were to move forward, we might be able to do this work in our building. But we're certainly not limited to those three.
And I think that the subcommittee is coming from a place, and I think the committee, when it voted to authorize the pursuit of an additional program, is coming from a place of knowing that we have over 50% of our kids from eighth grade applying to CTE for the past two years, which really speaks to authentic learning opportunities in the classroom for kids. And we do understand that those can be extended into regular classrooms as well. So it kind of speaks to the need for pedagogic change to offer these experiences to even non-CTE students. At the same time, I think the frustration lies in another group of kids is going to be applying this spring, and some of them may be turned away. Some of our kids from Plington, Halifax, and Kingston. And it's not to the fact that Elliot and Michaela and Jill and Ryan are doing their jobs. And I also think, you know, we need to be careful as a committee about our role in curriculum versus our role in supporting programming. You know, we wouldn't necessarily go to our science department and say, hey, we want you to teach this kind of science. But bearing up the results, the job results that we see in some of these IT programs, you know, I didn't know Lucas had done all of this research. I'm just hearing those opportunities versus the opportunities we see in an IT program could present. Multifaceted reasons why I aim that way as a school committee director.
So I'm going to give my personal opinion about the two most dramatic technological changes that are going to shape our students, our kids. One is the genetic revolution, the sequencing of the human genome and all of the technologies that will spin off of that, which is already, I mean, it's completely transformed law enforcement. It is completely transforming family planning. It is completely transforming disease and everything like that. We have a huge biotech sector up here in Boston. That's the first area. And the second area is artificial intelligence. And if students are not grounded in the underpinnings of artificial intelligence and the resulting technologies and how to use them, they are going to get left behind in the job market. I wouldn't even invest in an IT program devoted to web development, because web development is going to be AI-done in about 24 months. There are already big layoffs happening at big tech companies in their web development departments because of how much AI can do web development. So it's the applications and everything like that beyond that that incorporate AI that are going to be critical. It is, those two areas are just fundamentally necessary for just about any student who's, who's, you know, coming up at this time of life. So I, you know, the other areas are certainly worthy, but, I mean, half of marketing right now is already driven by AI. So IT, AI, things like that, I think are much, much better preparations for what students are going to encounter, that they're going to be better at preparing students for either higher education or some sort of job on the other side. You are seeing an erosion of public confidence in higher education. You are seeing a growth, a large growth in certificates and certifications and technical accomplishments and things like that that are being recognized by very high-tech companies. I mean, Google has its own curriculum with its own badges and awards and things like that that they accept for jobs. They make the curriculum, and you pass their stuff, and if you can demonstrate it post-job interview, you get hired at Google. So it's that kind of thing that I think we have to pay a lot of attention to. And I would very much support us getting down that road.
I think that Jason's comment about curriculum and driving the curriculum is very important. That we have subsets within our three camps that we take advantage of whatever program we decide to develop next. And at the subcommittee meeting, I said we ought to really look at the programs we have now. Maybe there's a program that's better than what we have now. Understanding that Chapter 74 is quite a process to get a certified program. I'm not saying we should abandon the programs we have now, but if we have space requirements that are limited, maybe we need to focus on CTE programs that most fit the student body, where we're going to make those students successful. Understanding that, not all students are going to be able to walk into an IT program and be able to comprehend, and it's not going to be able to match. It can be much better, kind of hands-on skill set, than we offer in a different CTE program. So all of that, that's good, but I think that the survey, the study, and the interest, the administration needs time to be able to put that together. Now, I'd like to ask the principal, are you willing to expand your team on the subject? You're doing it solely from an administration point of view. I mean, would you be involved, a CTE subcommittee member would be on your team, go to the programs and visit some of these things?
Never turn away the help.
That's what I'm just saying. Perhaps that way, we could bring some, you know, energy and focus to it. We had parents involved. We had, when we did full-day kindergarten in Kingston, I was a parent rep. There was a school committee rep, and there was staff. And that five or six of the core group made presentations back to the school committee. And it had a certain element of credibility, because it came from all the different aspects of what you had to present.
I'm just going out to the point of personal privilege. I appreciate, Mark, your comments in an ask that you were also putting out there that a school committee member do some of the work. You asked a lot of our administration. They have a lot of tasks already on their plate.
Yeah.
Just the fact that we're, if we're making an ask, we're willing to put a little skin in the air.
So I think I heard you say that you're already, you already have a plan in place with Elliot to explore and visit other schools who have other programs.
Right. We've begun that, we've begun the feasibility process.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I know there's still a motion on the table here we need to attend to. But to Mark's point and your agreement to it, do we want to see one or two school committee members participate, help administration through that process?
I'll just do both.
Thank you, Lucas. I thought you might. You just gave very.
I would consider it, if I could.
Okay.
Possibility. So.
Go ahead, Jason.
For you, Matt, a check to my good friend. Would you consider the participation of school committee members in the process to rescind your motion?
Yeah, sure.
Awesome.
Okay.
So, will they rescind my motion?
No.
Permission to rescind.
Yeah, you don't need it from me, but I'll give it to the class.
I just like to see things done, and I like to do big things, not small things. The marketing and criminal justice looks a little bit like an easy one. I would like to take a proper one. Because it's something that's going to only happen once. We can't have expensive CTE programs forever. I would ideally love to open two CTE programs, but the case is not going to happen.
Build me a new building, Lucas. Get me the third floor and we'll make it happen.
We'll build that part someday.
And you know, it felt so wonderful, so much work went into it when the healthcare facet opened. And, you know, some of us are still on the committee that were, that were there for that. And it was a lot of work, and it, right out of the gate, it was so successful, and it's been so strong of a program. successful, and it's been so strong of a program. And I think we want the same next time as well. So-
I made that speech for healthcare, buddy.
All right, folks. Lucas, thank you for everything just now.
Can I add to his report with this Kingston Living Magazine, which is highlighting on a monthly basis our CT programs? And it's a real nice read for folks if you have a chance. I think it's very exciting that a local magazine has picked up in doing that. And I would kind of thank the administration for providing the information and the resources and the accessibility to the schools and the get this material.
Mark, I'd love to peek at that sometime.
I guess I have an alumni on the cover this month.
Yeah.
Oh, you're probably going to have a lot of the whole night. I'm particularly excited about speaking.
Yeah, I agree. Moving on, chairman's report. I don't have any correspondence that you folks are not aware of.
Sorry.
Sure.
There was also one item on the CTE agenda regarding the hoisting license, and I would like Jason to give more details.
So Elliot brought this to our attention. I was very thankful that he brought it up during our conversation. But our students currently in agricultural lab are not fully able to utilize the equipment of their trade right now because Governor Healy's administration started enforcing a law that's been on the books forever that would require a DOT certification for students to use some of the equipment that they've been using for years under the license of their certified and licensed teachers in CTE. You know, we did hire a former district attorney a year ago, and this is sometimes what you get when you have an attorney in the corner office. Good news is Senator Moran, our own senator, she has filed legislation to put things back the way they were, to allow students in vocational and agricultural schools, because this is affecting our agriculture here, but the Aggies are really suffering big time. Their kids are not allowed to use any equipment that would be certified under hoisting license. So there was a public hearing on that. I threw the call out to my MASC tribe members, and we're pushing forward on that. So I'm hoping that sooner rather than later, our CT students in horticulture will be allowed to utilize the equipment that we invested in, but also that's critical for them to understand in order to be productive in the workplace when they graduate from Silver Lake High School. So thanks to Elliot for that.
Yeah.
And his group Rava has really been the group that's been pushing on this hard.
That's not an easy license to get. I don't know how you would expect-
Well, it's even further complicated because there is only one doctor in Massachusetts that will do DOT physicals for children under 18. One. And they're in Eastern Mass, so we benefit. But what about the kids out in the dark shoes?
Yeah.
I mean, there's geographical inequities right there, and it's a $75 fee, plus they have to take an online course to prove they know the equipment. You know how they prove they know the equipment? They stand next to a certified professional who's done it for years, who teaches them to do it safely and appropriately. That's how you know our kids are going to utilize that equipment safely.
Yeah, yeah. And even the DOT physical, it's every two years. So, wow, that's-
Again, it was an accident that has been on the books for years, and the enforcements of some regulations have kind of turned on all of a sudden, and we just need to course prep things back the way they were for our kids in the agricultural world.
Yeah. My son is affected by it, and he came home, he's like, you know, he just turned 16, and he's like, I can't use any of the equipment this year. I was like, I'm sorry, bud, you know?
We are pushing hard.
Let me know if you need any.
Thank you. Kathy's on board as well, so Senator Brady. A lot of people have been hearing from us.
Good.
Feel free to pick up the phone. Constituents matter more than advocacy members, you know?
Yeah, that's-
Tell the story. Stories matter. My kid, this is how it's affecting my kid.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
Back to the fee for the physical, is there a funding issue with providing that?
Yeah, no school's budgeted for it, so individuals now have to come up with it. And again, that's a matter that could, some families can afford the $75. It makes a big difference in the household finances.
It's time out of school because you're not going to get a DOT physical on a Saturday morning.
No.
Or a Friday night.
It's an impossibility for many of our students, let's be honest, to get to Eastern Massachusetts to take a physical. It's ridiculous.
This whole scenario you just shared doesn't make sense. It needs to be reversed because this is-
Common sense will prevail.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Lucas, right, bureaucracy takes time. We can't just flip a switch to the back. But the gears are in motion.
Thank goodness. Yeah.
Thanks to Elliot and his group for really pushing on this hard.
That's, that's just-
Yeah, Tyler would send me videos of his teacher taking him, using the equipment and, you know, the little mini excavators, and then he would be the one that would cut up the wood and then drive the tractor to the front for the wood to be put on sale. So it's, to see him and to have, I'm fortunate that he had one year as a freshman to be able to jump on that equipment and utilize it, get to learn it, and, you know, know the safety protocols of it. But now, just to have the rug ripped underneath and then think of the setbacks for the kids that are freshmen that are now entering into that program that aren't going to have that for, it depends too if they're, if they're, you know, early starting as a freshman, at like 14, they're not going to use that towards the end of the program.
Right.
As opposed to getting four years of all different equipment and feeling comfortable and knowing adequately know how to use that machinery.
Right. I mean, CTE is a hands-on program.
Yeah.
That's, you know, period.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Let's stay on top of that one. I, yeah.
Absolutely. I will move that to my legislation report moving forward.
All right, thank you. And we are actually on your report now.
Okay, wonderful. So, last time we were together, I talked about a possible federal shutdown. It didn't happen. It's a nice surprise. But now, we have no speaker, and the resolution only brings us to November 15th. So we're again on the countdown to having no federal budget with no speaker. So God knows what's going to happen in DC. That's all I'm going to say about that right now. State tax cuts went through, and one of the areas where that's going to benefit us the most is the child tax credit has been increased, so our families should see some benefit from some state tax cuts. So not only did the state invest historic dollars in public education last year, they've also given tax relief in a very progressive manner with families noticeably going to feel the effects of the child kind of tax credits when they file their income tax eight in April of 2024. So I was very happy to see that come through. I am testifying in front of the joint committee on municipal and regional governments on Tuesday at 1:30 in the afternoon on two bills. One of the bills came directly from the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. So if you ever wonder how things become law, it starts with conversations. And the conversation that started around this table years ago was, how do we let our towns have a method to deal with the fluctuations in assessments even when we're providing them with fiscally responsible budgets? So, one year when this school committee had a 3.4% increase, Plinton saw a 10% increase in its assessment. Now, you're allowed to raise taxes by 2.5% plus local growth. How do you do that when your budget's going up 10%? Interestingly enough, Plinton also had a year where we saw a negative 8.39% increase. So we paid less a year later for the education we received here at Silver Lake. So what we proposed at this level was, why don't we save money when we have some extra cash for those days where it's really coming down on our rainy day fund? Let's even up those peaks and valleys so it's a nice steady climb, okay? Because budgets are going to climb year in and year out. I think we all will admit that. 2% or 3% is pretty normal to see. But seeing the fluctuations here are just untenable. So Kathy Winatra filed a legislation on our behalf, and Kathy and I will be testifying in front of the joint committee. Christine supplied us with some excellent data showing those fluctuations in our assessments. This would be under Chapter 40, which is why it's not being reviewed by the education committee, it's being reviewed by the municipality committee. Each of our towns would have the ability to establish this reserve fund, you know, years where we have a lower assessment, put some money aside for the years where the assessments were in. So I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. A second area, special cost, and the Plinton School Committee put in a request to Kathy to file legislation to increase the special ed reserve fund from 2% of net school spending to 5% of net school spending. So the special ed reserve fund allows a town to save money in case they have some extraordinary cost, like a mid-year move-in or an unexpected child being referred for an IDP and being picked up, and that extra cost is then borne by the towns. It costs us to send a kid to the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, which is one of my favorite places in the world, between $50,000 and $70,000 as tuition. That doesn't even include the transportation. That's our cheapest alternative. It's our closest to home alternative. Very often, PAC and the collaboratives in our area might not be able to meet the needs of the students that we're sending, and we have to consider private special ed programs in Massachusetts. You may be aware that last year, private special ed schools in Massachusetts were allowed to increase their tuitions by 14%. Again, we are capped at 2.5% to raise and appropriate at the local level, but these special ed schools were not, 14%. And I'll tell you what, digging through the rationale for why those schools needed those funds, it actually makes sense with the inflationary pressures they were feeling to provide the level of care to the students that we send to them. I just want to put the numbers out there. This is going to shock your system. For a day program right now, and this, this information is available through the mas.gov Operational Services Division, they have their FY24 private special ed tuition prices. For a day program, we're looking at a tuition between $70,000 and $180,000 per pupil on average before transportation. Residential education costs, these are for students who are extremely medically fragile, who have significant disabilities, can range from $200,000 to $400,000 plus per pupil, okay? Imagine a student moving into district who legally is entitled to these services and morally, as an educator and a school committee member, I want to provide those services. It would break your budget mid-year. This reserve fund and beefing it up to 5% of net school spending would allow you to have the ability to take care of any child who moves into your school district mid-year, and then you have some time to plan for the following discussion. So I'm proud to say that Kathy is going to be presenting with me on that one as well next Tuesday. And I'm hearing at this point that there is very little opposition to either one of these bills because it's a municipality's own dollars. We're not asking to tax anybody. We're not asking one town to pay someone else's bill. It's just a vehicle for us to save for those rainy days and take care of the kids who come to our towns. So I'm very excited, I'm very nervous, but we'll, you know, some given this for you. And this is what's happening with bills right now. Last year, there were like 16 days where over 12,000 different bills were filed, right? Then they close the window, and they have this giant pile of bills in all different aspects of local governments and state governments, and they get sent out to these committees, and the committees are supposed to go through their laundry list. So that was last February. Now here we are in October, and they're finally coming into committees. And they'll either get referred out to study, which basically means the bill's dead, or they will get moved back to the full house in Senate for a vote, and will become part of MGL at the end of this fiscal year, most likely when they pass the budget. I'm hoping the hoisting license one goes a little bit faster. I would love to have these two reserve funds in place for town meetings so we could establish them all the fun leads in the hilt. But again, slow process, but we're making, we are making progress, and that's the important word here. So that's my report.
Excellent, excellent. And then you're representing us at MASC?
So, yes, the delegate assembly for MASC is November 6th, I believe, or November 8th, I'm trying to think. And ironically, one of the items that will be brought up again is the MCAST test. So, MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, has been on the record for years opposing the MCAST's graduation requirement. We've also asked for moratoriums on MCAST testing. We've also asked for the study of alternatives to MCAST testing, and we've also voted to support the repeal of MCAST testing. This is an issue that we've been beating with drum on for years, right? So, yes, the MTA has some similar platforms, but the fact that the School Committee Association of Massachusetts and the Mass Teachers Association are seeing this through a very similar lens should really tell the public the value of the MCAST test. So, it'll be interesting how it's voted up, because it's a, therefore let it be resolved, and there's four parts that we have aims to achieve. I wouldn't be surprised to see that resolution broken into four independent resolutions, and I don't actually know how all four votes will, I can't predict what to come out. So I will report that in November or December, too, is how the vote came up. I'm sure it will be published at masc.org very quickly after the vote's made.
Thank you. Now, did any of the school committee member opt to attend the annual meeting this year?
So maybe, as indicated, she'd like to come down. And again, MASC has been gracious enough to say to me, as part of my perks of being an officer, I can bring some people. So we're saving the district again. $90 for Amy's participation, over $350 for my participation, courtesy of MASC, which is why I was very thankful tonight. You guys all authorized us to spend $225 to investigate the National History Council, right? We are, we are saving money for the district and participating in PD, so I appreciate you spending a couple bucks on us so we could participate in some other PD.
Excellent, very good. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to come down that Friday, please let me know. I'll get you lunch. You can go to some sessions.
Food always brings people out, so, thank you.
And the speaker that day is speaking on Jordan, AI, and the influence on the education sector, and why we need to embrace it instead of vilify it. And we have a model policy that MASC is going to be putting out fairly soon that talks about how students should utilize them appropriately and how teachers should be teaching it in their classrooms. Once upon a time, a ballpoint pen was illegal in public schools because it was an unfair advantage to the kids who still had to dip their quill into the inkling. We progressed. We understood. Hey, this is pretty good. We're going to see the same thing with AI.
Interesting territory. Thank you. Negotiations will be, go ahead. We'll be going into executive session briefly after tonight's meeting to cover that topic. PAC?
So PAC met on October 2nd for our first meeting of the year. It was pretty profound. During, a lot of the business was basically appealing to new members to what PAC's all about. The director's report was basically, this is what PAC does and, you know, whom we serve. Enrollment this year is 120. We did a really, really minor reorganization. Basically, the chairs of the subcommittees just basically shuffled around. Two big pieces where we renewed the retiree benefits for fiscal year '25, and we renewed the line of credit. So it was, yeah, pretty business-like, short meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Policy.
I would appreciate a motion to waive the actual reading.
Oh, come on, Jason.
We would be here until midnight. Please.
I move that we waive the actual reading of the first three policies.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Do you want to... All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And it was a heck of a policy subcommittee meeting. I am once again the chair of the policy subcommittee, happy to do so. And we had some great conversations. We really dug into some of the language, some of the MGLs behind the rationales. Some of them we giggled at because they changed literally one word from school to district. We just need to keep up on these things, to keep our documents true, living documents. One of my favorites, Public Comment School Committees, that and Chair, you can't tell someone they can't swear.
It's the one big edit they took out that obscenities are not a reason to shut down.
It's a violation of their First Amendment. It was settled in the Massachusetts Superior Court that the public has the right to swear while making comments at a school committee meeting.
Oh. Quickly.
Do we have the right to swear during the meeting, too?
You do, but then they'll judge you the same way they judge an idiot swearing at a public comment session. We also included a staff physical contact policy. I would ask you to review this. This is nothing new. This is already protected under harassment and sexual harassment and Title IX. But this was just further protections for the district of what is acceptable, staff physical contact with students. Moving on. Parent notification relative to sexual education. It is our policy to notify parents of the sexual ed curriculum to allow opportunities for parents to opt their children out. If we have a student move in mid-year, it's the obligation of the district to inform those families at that point of what the curriculum is and give the opportunity for their child to opt out. So there are just some language cleanups around parent notification relative to sex ed, but the policy is still relatively the same, and it's our obligation to notify the parents and allow them to offer them to opt their child out. Homebound instruction talks about compensatory services for students who are out on medical leave for an extended period of time. Maybe you're familiar with the fact that sometimes compensatory services have to be given to children on IEPs, but it's also for general ed students from their round school for 15 consecutive days because of medical issues. Homeschooling, this is just updating again obligations of the district and obligations of the homeschooling parent to inform each other practices. Alternative school programs, maybe some of you went to high schools when you were younger that had alternative tracks or alternative programs for graduation. This would just clarify for us the ability to have a program here at Silver Lake that would be considered an alternative school program. Currently, we don't have one, but this would allow us to institute one if we ever saw one. Moving down, we talked about policy surveys again and the difference between policy and procedure. Again, asking Ryan to put out notice to parents at specific timeline is not the school policy, that is school procedure. However, in respect to the need for us to collect data from students, in respect to concerns of some people, Ryan has agreed yet again to put out three times prior to surveys being administered to students, questions, the purpose for the questions being asked, and the information as to how to opt their child out of said service. This is just updating the language in the policy to make sure that's qualified. And the allergy policy in it says it has to be reviewed. The policy itself says it has to be reviewed every two years or so, and our nurse leader did those reviews and added any updates that were relevant and put professional practice. Any of you guys have any questions before I read the off list?
Would you want?
Not to be recognized by the change.
Oh, Mark, sorry.
It was a tie. Okay.
I'm in charge.
The question about staff physical contact with students, is there anything that talks about student physical contact with staff?
General principles. All physical contact between employees and students should have valid educational purpose and objective necessary to meet the students, not the staff members' needs. It's just regular comments on stuff. It's not saying a staff member can't, right?
No. What my comment is...
Very important for us.
What do we have in the policies? Do we have a policies for physical contact with students?
We can review that. We can review that. That's not what this policy's intent is. This policy's intent is to make sure we, the adults of the school district, understand our roles in ever instituting physical contact with a student in this district. It's not the other way around. So it's very purposeful in one direction. Okay?
Our student handbook would cover that.
Yeah, that's what I wondered. I've seen it somewhere. I was talking about...
I think there is some policy around as well, but this is directly about staff. It's not the other way around.
Christine, did you have a comment?
Yes, it's on the home tutoring. So we are having a very difficult time getting licensed teachers. I don't even think it's so much for the hourly wage, although that plays a big piece into it. There isn't enough licensed teachers and certainly not enough special education licensed teachers to be able to say that every child that requires this type of tutoring is going to receive a licensed teacher to carry that tutoring out. So we are kind of having to go to a virtual tutoring, which is not the best. I'm wondering if the idea that we do our due diligence to find licensed teachers and then maybe paraprofessionals that at least work in schools with children anyway, it's the... The tutoring services for special education are never going to hold up to the FATE compliance.
We like that during the pandemic.
I can't defend that anyway. But we want to make sure that we always are being aware of how our kid is doing and try to keep them up as much to date as we possibly can.
So Dr. Fabrizio, just so you know, this specific item is not a special ed specific policy. This is for general education. Totally understand where you're coming from, and thank you for mentioning that to the committee. And we definitely learned after the pandemic, some of the consequences of trying to utilize that virtual instruction when students have FATE was not met in the eyes of the law. This one specifically is for homebound students for medical reasons, general ed. And it does say that a licensed teacher shall be assigned to the homebound instructor by the superintendent who designated. It does not in this say that it has to be in person instruction. So for a general ed setting, I think your notes that the teacher shortage is real, it's not going away. It's going to deepen, and it's going to be here for at least a decade. This according to all teacher preparatory programs out there, they are seeing all-time lows in freshmen this year again entering into teacher preparatory programs. They don't want to put themselves in the fray. So...
The cost of the virtual tutoring is one and a half times what we pay.
Understood. But unfortunately, this comes from the code of Massachusetts regulation, and we don't have the flexibility to not have it be a licensed teacher. Again, this is why it's called compensatory services. It's to try and make up for their lack of engagement in the classroom, they're served by teachers while they're out on extended. And it's not to keep them progressing in the curriculum, it's to keep them from regressing while they're out. It's a minimal. It even says, "Homebound instruction is offered in basic elementary subjects and in secondary subjects which do not require laboratories or special equipment." And it's subject in all cases to the availability. There is some language there to qualify teachers. But the next sentence says, "L licensed teacher shall be assigned." So we would have to show our due diligence to find a licensed teacher. If this was under the PCE SAT five one, make sure if challenged, we would have that evidence for availability.
I apologize. Can I ask one question? If it was already asked, I apologize again. How frequently have we experienced this?
We have several students every year that qualify for homebound instruction.
We do.
Catastrophic illness, sometimes concussion, no, just want to give some areas. Sometimes concussions, unfortunately, sometimes mental illness, hospitalizations, and most of the students being out for 15 days consecutive.
Yeah.
You know, we are seeing as educators, kids out, year in and year out for a variety of reasons for medical for 15-plus days. So this policy is coming from CMR code of Massachusetts regulation because the state is acknowledging the fact that there needs to be some safeguard to make sure they don't fall further behind while they're out than they already will be when they come back. And this is again, one of the reasons why we advocated so strongly for a break program, a bridge room, a transition room for kids who are coming back from extended hospitalizations or medical, you know, excused absences to transition them back into the routine of the day-to-day classroom setting. I appreciate the school committee saw that and put it into the budget in the past. So we have that for our kids. This is just the what we do before we even get back to that speech. Does anybody have any questions about any particular policies? I'd be happy to respond. All right, seeing that, I make the motion to accept as a first read of the policies,
Is that you?
IJ. Excuse me. IJ. I had a field trip today, I'm sorry.
One second.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jason. Safer.
Hey, I'm not going to be that long. Safety, facilities, fees, and revenue. Tonight's discussion, though, phenomenally, like we were speaking, focused on facilities and our capital plan, and we made several adjustments to the capital plan going forward to pull a few of the items out of our capital plan and place them in individual articles on town meeting floor. That is still in the draft form, so I clearly can't report on that. I will tell you that on November 14th, if anybody's bored, 5:00 p.m. at the Silver Lake Regional Middle School, come on by and see us continue the discussion on the capital plan. We will be adding agenda items so that we do visit the fees and the revenue and the safety issues as we go forward. I do have, we should have the traffic light project moving forward this week. There were some issues waiting for engineering to be confirmed before we can file. And basically, pretty much it.
Excellent. Thanks, Mark. Treasurer's report. Hey, Christine, please correct me if I screw any of this up. I'm glad you found it. I should leave a review of your desk.
So there were no vendor warrants, student activity fees, or student activity warrants or middle school activity warrants paid this month for a total of zero. Payroll and accounts payable, $946,510.37 for a grand total of $946,510.37.
Very good. Thank you. Union 31. Next meeting is November 16th. And Mark, you said Safer was the 15th or 16th?
14th.
14th. Okay. Thank you.
I can't make it this soon. That's why I won't be able to meet on Thursday. I won't be able to meet on Thursday.
Okay.
I apologize.
Oh, no, no worries. You're always here. Okay. Approval of still schedule?
On October 11th, '23, there were 23 warrants, including accounts payable, student activities, and payroll that were electronically sent to superintendent as well as a single student subcommittee of Paula Hatch, Jason Fraser, and Lucas Kowalski. All were signed and returned, and all payments have been issued. Thank you. That's why there wasn't much tonight because our warrant schedule is still the second, third, and the last of it was last week. But there was one payroll warrant, and then there's also the school resource officer warrant for the two for Halifax. We've got to start the late tonight.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, before we go into executive session, which I would welcome a motion for, dates to remember, Kingston Town Meeting, October 24th, November 7th in Service Day, November 10th Veterans Day, November 16th, the next joint Silver Lake Union 31 meeting, November 22nd, Early Release Day, November 23rd through the 24th, Thanksgiving recess, December 7th is the next Silver Lake meeting, and December 14th is Halifax Town Meeting. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion to...
Not to back in public.
Enter to executive session, not to return to public session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2183, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, contract negotiations with Silver Lake Ministers Association, and MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2187, comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law to approve the executive session minutes of 9:07.
Second.
Okay. Vocal call. Jason?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Thanks, folks. We don't usually go this long. It's been a long time since we've hit 9 o'clock. Thank you.